All right, well, welcome, everyone. We will call this meeting to order. This is the Monday, December 8th, 5:30 Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. It's nice to see a room full of people. It shows that government is in action and working when you get a room full of people here that have an agenda item that they're interested in speaking about. So, welcome to everyone. Special welcome to Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Woodard. And also, we have Commissioner Warren Judge here as well this evening. So, thank you both for being here with us. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Agenda Approval.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or comments? Others in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move on to public hearings, and I will turn this over to our town attorney, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be three public hearings tonight. Let me run over the ground rules that will apply to each of these three public hearings. A public notice of each of these hearings was published in the newspaper and posted on town bulletin boards and in accordance with statutory requirements, and that has been filed with the town clerk. The town clerk will record all oral statements that are made here tonight, and she will provide a concise summary of what is said here tonight. Any written summaries will also be provided to the clerk and included in the records. If you want to speak tonight, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statements can be recorded, and there will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward. The first public hearing tonight is a recommended amendment to Chapter 153 zoning involving the floor area ratio. Chapter Section 153-100D proposed amendment to lower current floor area ratio in the ocean impact residential zone. Greg, are you going to introduce this?
I would be happy to, sir.
All right, go ahead.
I was just waiting for somebody's cellphone. I don't want to be upstaged. Basically, what you have here tonight is a request and some information that would take the current floor area ratio and lower it. And there's also some incentives that go with that. And to really understand this, and I know a lot of people here are probably interested in it, you have to go back and look at the history just briefly. And I will be brief. What happened is before, 2006, density and bulk on the oceanfront was managed by units per acre. And in 2006, a fellow came in and said, "I want to do it differently." And then the floor area ratio was adopted, and it was put at a .6. And that's actually, there's, I guess, two buildings that were built under that. And since that time, the Community Appearance Commission was looking at the appearance of our oceanfront and brought it to this board's attention back in April of 2014 and said, "Hey, we want to take a look at this, and maybe the planning board and the Community Appearance Commission should get together and have a joint workshop and discuss it." So, that's what happened. And they actually met, I think, in June on the joint workshop, and then the planning board met and discussed it in September and October. And then, of course, now we had our last meeting scheduled, this public hearing. So, it's not something that's really new. It's been discussed quite a bit, and believe me, at the planning board level. Merritt can attest to that. There's a lot of discussion about what to do with it. So, what happened is, the recommendation that came out of the planning board was to take the current .6 and lower that to .4 unless you provided additional setbacks, and then it could be .45. And if you allowed for some beach access, a five-foot beach access, then it could go to .5. So, with some incentives, .4 to .5. And I know, I read, I was privy to two letters that were written, and I thank you for writing the letters, everybody that was interested in it. And I just wanted to make a couple of points before everybody starts talking about it so we'll understand that, number one, it does not apply to single-family dwellings. And I've had, one of the comments was, "Maybe it should." I've heard that today. And another point that's important is it does not really apply to an existing hotel or condominium building because we have a casualty clause in our ordinance that will allow reconstruction if there's a fire or a flood or a hurricane, act of God. So, I wanted to make those two points really clear. Another thing that's interesting is that when you look at how Kill Devil Hills has developed in the past and how it might develop in the future, this floor area ratio is an important tool for looking at bulk of a building. And I don't know if you've been into a beach community that, when you ride down the beach community, you see, you know, one structure right next to the next one that's really big, a real big structure. And that gives you a certain feeling about the community. And I think that's a point, and some of the other Community Appearance Commission people may make points tonight, and I'm sure some of the hotel people will make points, but the way your community looks and the people that you attract and what you might be looking at for the future is where the planning board and the Community Appearance Commission were coming from. And hopefully, this board will look at everything that's been said here tonight and some of the recommendations that have been made in the past and make a good decision for our community. But the planning board did recommend this for approval on October 21st, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Greg, about the board at this point? All right. Then we will start the comments. The first, the only person who signed up is Chris Merrick. Come up, Mr. Merrick.
My name is Chris Merrick. I'm one of the owners at Ocean Atlantic Rentals. Of course, we have a Kill Devil Hills location, and I'm also a member of the CAC board and have been involved in a lot of the discussions. And I just wanted to stand tonight and let you know, as a businessperson in Kill Devil Hills, that certainly benefits by more folks squeezed in closer, who I can deliver baby cribs and kayaks to, I am still in favor of the floor area ratio being adjusted with what we've sent your way. And I want to give you my perspective on that is, with my crew and myself, a lot of times, it's difficult to navigate the parking lots and the stairwells and the non, what I'd call, commercial elevators that are in those, a lot of times. So, just as a vendor who's going in and out frequently, I wanted to give you that perspective. And also, I'm a big believer, at one point in our meetings, we talked about, you know, the shadow that's cast by a lot of these buildings. And I'm glad that the provision was put in there for beach access and for, you know, just for the full lot to not be filled so much. But I wanted to share that with those two points, from a vendor's standpoint, in the parking lot and moving through the complex, I'm against the density that it is right now. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come up and identify yourself.
Do we need to sign up?
No, you can just come up and identify yourself.
I'm sorry.
Hello? My name is Jeff Fabricant. I'm here to speak out against the change in the FAR. I understand that this zoning change would not affect existing buildings, is what Greg was saying. So, I have to ask, you know, the question of why we're making this change or why it's being proposed right now. If the goal is to avoid future condos and hotels in Kill Devil Hills, I believe that's what this is going to accomplish. Lower FAR is only going to make it harder for a new hotel or condo to be viable, and so it only worsens the zoning bias towards houses and away from condos and hotels. So, Kill Devil Hills is going to be looking for just more houses. In fact, the FAR change six years ago resulted in two condo buildings. Those are the only projects since then, and I'm not aware of any in the pipeline right now that are affecting that. I know Seven Seas was rebuilt. There have been no new hotels built in Kill Devil Hills in over 30 years, which is basically an entire generation. And during that period, we've had many, many houses built on the oceanfront. This shadow on the beach argument, I think I sent to the mayor a diagram, which I can provide you all from Ben Kahoon, which basically shows you that this argument, which has been debunked before, is not true. The houses are actually worse of a shadow on the beach than condos and hotels because the shadow on the beach is a function of setback and not the size of a structure. And so, this FAR rule is more for density and has less to do with setback. And so, if the town wants less shadow, then it should focus more on setbacks and sideyard setbacks. I would just suggest that it's in the town's best interest to encourage hotels. I think hotels are a good source of jobs, they're good for tourism, they're good for groups, weddings, bus tours, and that's something that houses don't accommodate, and they're good for restaurants and local businesses. So, I would suggest the town look for ways to encourage future hotels, and the town not look for ways to discourage future hotels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Come up, please.
My name is Charlie Mills, and I guess would be representative of the general partner that put together the investment group for the Hilton and for the Ramada. My comment is this. I think anything more severe than .5 would make it impossible to build a modern structure. Now, the, I think .4 actually would be pretty much of a disaster for those people that live here because what it would do is simply two things. Number one, no one would ever be able to build a new, nice hotel. Therefore, everybody would hold on to their old, 30-year-old property, which already looked a little bit dated. And you'd be sitting here 15 or 20 years from now, and now they're all 50 years old and 60 years old, and it looks like a tenement because everything is so old. Now, .5 is a buildable number. It's, you know, it has to be pretty upscale to have that ratio. It can't be cheap, but that's doable. .4 really just isn't doable. And basically, it means there will be no hotels, which actually, if there were no hotels and I lived here, I'd say, "That's pretty cool." But there are hotels here, which means you're going to have these old hotels just getting older and more and more decrepit, bringing lower-income people, people that are more difficult to police, people more likely to be in drugs and all that kind of stuff, and attracting the wrong kind of people to your community. So, that's my comment. .5 is at least doable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak at this public hearing? Come on.
Yes, my name is Matt Willen. I'm a resident of KDH, also work for Village Realty. Just like to kind of duplicate what Jeff said about the shadow and what he said about houses being a greater shadow caster. That's true, if they're not, you know, 6,000 square feet, you can go to a large structure setback. Another thing heard at the planning board meeting was the congestion, that being a major concern. If you look at First Flight, it's on five lots. You've got one drive aisle. You've got, just to the north, you've got five houses with five drive aisles. You're riding bikes or driving in your car. It's a lot harder to navigate five houses. The safety, the multifamily is sprinkled, so they're safer that way. You get economies of scale because of, you know, water usage, number of pools and whatnot, and diversification of lodging. So, just reiterating what Jeff said. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Come up, Mr. O.
Good evening. How are y'all? My name's Bob Oaks. I'm a resident of Naggs Head. Wanted to speak for just a minute. We've, I have a vacation rental company as well, and we've managed some of those, some of those places, some on both sides, some of the bigger homes, some of the smaller condominiums or that size place. I think what y'all's FAR gave you was some diversity in housing that some of your neighbors don't have. And that is, instead of getting that 15-bedroom house, you've been able to get three, well, what's, five, three bedrooms. I think you're better off being able to have five three-bedrooms instead of one 15-bedroom. What we've seen is it allows a diversity of families to come. Not everybody wants to come with their 20 relatives. So, this, having the FAR the way it is, gives you the opportunity to do two- and three-bedroom condominiums, which have done well, and it accommodates a small family. And a small family trying to find something on the oceanfront these days is very difficult indeed. So, I kind of like it the way it is and hope y'all will keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Kelly, were you trying to come up?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Kelly, 211 C Village, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. In many ways, some of us, I think, believe that this may be one of the most important things that the community appearance has taken on. We were charged with doing whatever possible to encourage anything that makes our town look as good as it possibly can. And this was an issue that's been thoroughly studied, thoroughly opened, hearinged, and been through the planning board with great activity on their part, a joint work session with the CAC, as well as lots of good discussion. It's months now that we've been talking about this, and we really feel that the proposal before you tonight is a very reasonable proposal. First of all, just about all the buildings, a great majority of the buildings in the OIR zone meet a .5 or even a .4. Originally, we had talked very seriously about a .3 with the possibility of a 3.5 or a 4 based upon the two issues that Greg mentioned that would allow you to increase. But you have before you a .4, which is not really that big a change from the .6. The old, before 2006, units per acre, I've always thought had some illogical parts to it. How big is a unit would vastly change how many, how much ends up being on a piece of property. But we think the FAR, the floor area ratio, makes a whole lot more sense, and we would like to see it lowered. I want to thank everybody who's been a part of this discussion, planning board members, the staff, all of you all. It's all been very invaluable to us. And we have always wanted people to participate in the process of discussions over these kinds of issues because they really do have the potential for tremendous impact on the future, long after many of us in this room are gone. I think we've addressed some of the misunderstandings that it only applies to the ocean impact residential zone. It does not apply to single-family homes or even multifamily homes. And also, the point that if your building is destroyed, you can rebuild back to the original size and not have to conform if your building is bigger than .4 or .5 with the conditions. I guess I just want to say, first of all, let me tell you that the Community Appearance Commission's meetings are open to the public. We normally meet the Fourth Thursday of every month at 8:30 in the morning in this room. We welcome people to attend and to participate. This week, this month, because of Thanksgiving being the Fourth Thursday as well as Christmas, we are meeting this Thursday. It's a joint November/December meeting at 8:30 in this room, and we would welcome people coming and sharing their opinions with us about that. Let me just say lastly, because there's been a lot of discussion about this, the beach is, the beach is it. I mean, that's what we're all about. It really is the heart of everything that Kill Devil Hills is. And so, our only intention in proposing a lowering and asking the planning board and now the Board of Commissioners to lower the FAR slightly is to maintain what we believe will be the best possible situation for the beach and the people who come here. So, thank you for your support and for all of your participation.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thanks, Sue.
Skip, did you want to speak? Come up, please.
(inaudible). Well, light 'em up. Colleen Almany, 113 Port Hole Court. In the discussion, I would also like everyone to keep in mind what the purpose of our land use plan is. And really, what we're asking you to do as a board is to be forward-thinking, not necessarily what we're going to happen, you know, what's going to happen with our beaches today, but what we're going to look like in another 30 or 50 years. I know, I've been lucky enough to have a career that involves working with a lot of the public. I've been in real estate sales, I've been in rentals, I work with the Chamber of Commerce. I talk to people every day, all day, all week, all month, all year. And the people that come here, come here because we're special. They come here because we have an area that is unique, and it's something that you can't find someplace else. And I think in pointing us back to our land use plan, it's important to hang on to that thing that makes the Outer Banks a destination place for people, weddings and such. I am certainly pro-business. I know that our hotels and motels and condos do great business, and they provide a service that a lot of people need. But I also know that when I drive down the beaches and other areas and it's one huge building after another, I feel claustrophobic, you know? I want to be able to have sight of the ocean and the waves, and, you know, even with today's storm, looking out from my office window thinking, "God, what a great place." You know, if we have huge buildings on top of each other, a lot of people are going to miss out on that. And I know that you guys are going to do a great job in making this decision, and I just wanted to go on record to say that I was in favor of this compromise, not dropping it down drastically, but meeting someplace in the middle where a lot of people are going to be able to take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Skip, come on up.
My name's Skip Jones. I'm probably a 30-year resident of Kill Devil Hills at least, and I've been on several of these committees and, you know, back to the Stockholders Committee. And I personally don't want to have to be able to downsize the buildings, probably with the occupancy maybe, but I am in total favor of the site, alleyways or whatever, where, you know, you can see the ocean when you drive down the bypass or the beach road, excuse me. But, you know, over the years, I've been on these committees, and I was even in favor of actually letting them raise the height a little bit just to bring in the side setbacks so we can get those alleyways. And when you're going on the beach road, you can actually see the ocean. These projects that we've been discussing, Croten Surf Club and the other one, they're just great-looking buildings. I mean, they couldn't have built them any nicer. The problem I have, if that's the best, I don't think it's good enough as far as having those alleyways and sightways. And you can get to that .5 that was being discussed earlier simply by decreasing or increasing the setbacks and letting the town have, well, I'd say, the public have an access to the beach. And I think that's a great compromise, you know? I mean, for, one of the problems we have now is to build big buildings, and the people had access before, now all of a sudden, they don't have access to the beach from their neighborhood that they've had for 25, 30, 40 years. So, I am on the CAC, and we have looked at this pretty hard with the planning board. And I really like the incentives to be able to increase the FAR. I think it's a great way to go, and I'm just, I'm in favor of the change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and women. Thank you for affording us this opportunity. Mr. Attorney, I'm here representing a group of motels, the Driftin' Sands, the Days in the Suites Mariner, the Days in Oceanfront Wilverna Albright, the Wilverna Albright's Cottage Court, the Wright House. I'd like to talk to you tonight about a vision for the town of Kill Devil Hills, at least share my vision with you, the commercial use of land as it pertains to hotels. Hotels serve a great need in any town, but particularly in this tourism-rich town of Kill Devil Hills. The following groups, first-time visitors. First-time visitors reserve the motel rooms. They don't come to stay in a house. They come and they start using motels, they're staying for less than a week. As their love for the area grows, they begin to return more frequently each year and year after year. These people have children, their families get bigger, they graduate into rental homes. So, we've got a great vertical monopoly working here in Kill Devil Hills, thanks to home builders and the commercial developers and the real estate industry and the fact that we've got a beach and ocean and tourism. Hotels are used by groups of all ages, thousands, hundreds of school tours come each year for the Wright Brothers Monument and that bit of history that is so important to this country. Senior citizen tours, sporting event tours, sports teams, groups, and many other segments in the visiting population that would not go into, houses are going to go into hotels. The less-than-a-week visitor, which I mentioned before, this equates to hundreds of thousands of room nights every year that would be lost if you had no hotels. The wedding industry ranks third in the nation in Kill Devil Hills, and Dare County does as a destination for weddings. And while the event house and a home for the bridal party is becoming accepted usage of our space, there are hundreds, thousands of guests each week that are renting motel rooms, wedding guests that are renting motel rooms, staying one, two, maybe sometimes three nights. Those folks are not going to rent homes and condominiums, they're going to rent hotel rooms. All of these rooms generate business, a business pool, a customer base for our restaurants would sorely need the business. When you check in and pay $20,000 and bring 25 people and have a gourmet kitchen, you're not going to go out to eat. You're going to cook in. Grocery stores love it, but our restaurants are losing that business, and we need to keep all segments of our industry healthy. Today, there are only 1,130 hotel rooms in the town of Kill Devil Hills, which is a number that's been declining for the last 25-plus years. You all know me. We've got, I feel good about the appearance of our properties. We don't let our properties, we have aging properties, we've kept them up, they're up to code, electrical and plumbing. We are not letting them become tenants, we will not let them become tenements. I would suggest that you look at hotels as commercial development and unlink the hotel industry, unlink the hotels from multifamily zoning. Both of these valuable investments in our community are not comparable in design and use. The design's not the same, and the use is different. While you're sleeping in a bed at night, the marketing and use of the hotel room is much different than condominiums. Both of these valuable investments serve the town well and should have, I believe, if we cannot change the proposal, possibly look at separate zoning for the hotels and maybe design that hotel, that zoning to fit the hotel. I think Skip had an excellent idea. If the hotel developer had the ability to separate buildings and not get penalized for having multiple buildings on the site, I think you, he or she would relish the idea of what, the things they can do design-wise, aesthetically, and you get those viewscapes, those viewways to the oceanfront. And that's why I'm saying, maybe there needs to be an uncompling of these two uses and have some hotel-specific zoning that would let the hotelier design and meet all the criterias that the town has. Hotels provide stable jobs and locations for meeting events. The floor area ratio density adopted eight years ago will provide the needed density for development of new hotels. You can certainly see the change in density alone did not cause a rush of development in hotels at all. In fact, there have been no new hotels built. The driving force- The driving force for that is the economic downturn and the scarcity of financing or no financing at all. Now, I know as stewards of this government in Killable Hills, you all can't rely on those outside factors, but to put together a hotel package, the developer needs land, needs land use, needs all his or her utilities. They need a density that allows them to create the revenue-generating portion of the investment to service the debt and to return on investment. And financing is a huge part of that. But the floor area ratio just did not open the floodgates for new hotel development. But it is where it needs to be, in my opinion. I've been a hotelier since nineteen seventy-two. You all know I haven't come in, made a fast buck, and left town. And I'm confident in what I know and others know. I know what myself and others need to be successful in trying to develop a new hotel. The proposal cuts the density by thirty-three percent. That, however you slice it, that's a significant reduction in the allowed density that is on the books right now. And I'm also concerned, and I hear that it does not affect existing buildings, but I hope you all review that. And I am concerned about what it does as non-conforming. I know right now that I have one property that I believe would become non-conforming on this, so what do we do with that? What do we do with a non-conforming structure? You know, am I going to be able to renovate it? Am I going to be able to make changes to it if it's non-conforming? Tonight, I would like to ask you to consider not adopting the change to the density in Chapter 153. If you feel you must move forward, I would like to suggest that you pull hotels and motels from the language and create a separate zoning for the hotels and motel structures. Have the zoning fit the specific use, if you would. Our company has wanted to build a new hotel for a long time. We've had three different projects over the years. One, we lost in the eighties because of a change in lock coverage. One, we lost in two thousand and three because Hurricane Isabel did so much damage to our businesses, and we were a hundred days away from the Centennial Flight. We just, we lost track, we lost, it pulled our attention away from it. And the third one, and we were just days away from pulling a building from it for that hotel project. And then the third one in two thousand and eight certainly succumbed to the economic downturn. I only share that with you to let you know that we're good corporate citizens. We will continue to be good corporate citizens. We're going to, we value Diane Baum's hotel that she built. We've kept it, we've kept the lobby, we keep it upgraded, we keep it renovated. Every now and then, a guest complains about the size of a hotel room built in nineteen forty's, but that's just the way it is. We, the charm of that property, we feel is important that we keep it that way. And...
Ten seconds, Ms. Judge.
If we didn't feel committed to the town of Killable Hills and everything that it wants, we could have sold the twelve lots for the sixteen to twenty-four houses and not be working as hard as we are today. Again, I ask you to reconsider the reduction in density for hotels or separate hotels from the current chapter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I've always wanted to cut him off. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Nick?
Nick Nuzzi Shutter's Hotel. Warren is a real hard act to follow. I guess you kind of pretty much summed up what I was going to say. I do want to point out a few things, though. Our family's been in business in Killable Hills since nineteen seventy-five, and we take great pride in how our businesses look. We feel like we've contributed a lot to the community in Killable Hills. In two thousand and seven, this change has not have been a whole lot of things that have happened, but I've seen a decline in hotel rooms, which is going to continue if this amendment is passed. So, as a result of that, you're going to take away the middle-class folks that visit this beach that can't afford to stay in a large cottage. All they can afford is like a weekend, three or four-night stay, and that's about it. So, we're kind of going to get away, and, you know, either you have large money or you don't come. And, you know, with hotel rooms, we also, you know, hotel people normally patronize all restaurants. They patronize other establishments, gift shops, et cetera. I just feel like that, basically, that our hotel, as well as all of my counterparts that own hotels, we are big contributors in the town of Killable Hills, and we also pay a lot of the tax burden that I think helps offset other folks. So, in saying that, I urge you not to adopt this amendment, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Anyone else wish to speak? I do not see anyone else, Mayor. And Mr. Nuzzi did submit a written document as well, which I think you all have.
Yes, thank you.
So, it would be appropriate for the board to discuss it. I will not close the public hearing yet in case you have some questions you want to ask someone.
Thank you. It's up to me for us to have a discussion, and if we have any questions. So, open the floor for discussion. Want to start?
I would, well, I'd start by saying, I hope that no one thinks that we're, the comment was made that we're maybe trying to avoid hotels and condos, and that's not the case. That's never our intention, and it wasn't the intention of the CAC or the Planning Board when they brought it to us. What we're looking at is simply trying to control the mass of the buildings that are on the oceanfront. And again, also, the comment was made that there has been a couple built that are large, and they were built under the rule that came into effect in two thousand and seven. And there's no question, they look good, but I think there's also a consensus, a majority consensus, that they're just really, really big and maybe not suited for our community. And there's many reasons why there hasn't been any hotels in the last number of years here in Killable Hills, or in Nagseth, for that matter. The newest hotel in Nagseth, the Nagseth Inn, my wife's the general manager, they've been there since it opened in eighty-eight. They don't advertise it as the newest, but they are the newest hotel they've been there that long. So, there hasn't been any hotels built for twenty-seven years or so in either time. And during that time, there was opportunities. Even when the economy changed, when the economy went up and down, there was opportunities for those things to happen. And it wasn't because the towns, either of the towns, did anything to try to avoid having them or to prohibit them. And I would just want to make the point that that's not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to listen to what the public has told us on several occasions, our last two land, our last two citizen surveys, going back to nineteen ninety-seven. And the public also expressed their feelings when this first came, it first started being discussed in two thousand and six, I believe. And the planning board at that time voted six to zero in favor of raising it to .6. They did not want it raised. And the majority of the people that spoke at that time, I was on the planning board, were against any change to that amount because they were afraid of what would happen with the mass of the buildings. And there are a couple examples that maybe, in some people's opinion, kind of exceeded their vision of what we should have on the oceanfront. And I know whether it was something to do with single-family homes or duplexes, or hotels, or condos, or whatever it may be, everybody has whatever it is that their interest is. And I think all of us up here try to take that in consideration. We have to consider what's good for everybody, for the condo owners, the hotel owners, the single-family homeowners, the people not only in the oceanfront, but between the highways and on the west side, and people that come here to visit and stay in hotels and condos. I think our feeling in getting to this point was that we're trying to reflect what we believe is, what we think is best for the town, based on the information we've received up to this point. And I'll let it go at that for now, I may have more to say, but give somebody else a chance.
As far as compromises go, I mean, I thought this was a pretty good one. I mean, it looks pretty fair. If you allow for the setbacks in the public access, I mean, it's .5. It's not much off .6. I mean, I thought it was pretty fair for compromises.
It means you'll never have a hotel. I just want you to understand that. You will never have.
But that's okay. I mean, I don't like competition.
No comments from the audience unless the Commissioners ask for it.
So, did you have anything else? No. Couple comments that I've received. First, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out. It's nice to have a room full of people. Couple comments that I've received is that, you know, there was talk about beach access being limited with some of these developments. Our beach access doesn't change with or without this change. We're not talking about removing any of our public beach accesses. We're not talking about changing the size of them. One of the options to get to the .5, however, is if you provide the setback, the five-foot along your property line, that you could provide additional beach access. But, you know, that five-foot buffer is there anyway because that's part of your setbacks. So, nothing's going to be built in that area, anyway. Part of my problem with this proposed change is the fact that we still have these huge homes being built. And if you're driving down the beach road, those homes block more of the ocean than the condos that are being discussed tonight that come close to the .6. The parking situation is worse. You're trying to get enough families in there to pay a twenty-five-thousand-dollar weekly rental. So, you might have ten families in there, ten or twelve, fifteen cars, and trying to navigate that. Chris, I mean, I know you guys, I'm sure you have some interesting problems trying to get your trucks in and out of some of those homes as well. If you don't allow the flexibility to have hotels or condos being built, then you eliminate the fact that we're going to have more of those homes. Those homes are going to continue to be built. In fact, we've got an agenda item on a little bit later in the meeting about if we want to truly change something, let's change our setbacks, and let's change the overall number of bedrooms in the single-family homes as well. Let's leave in that playing field out. The, I think, the inability, someone made the comment during public comment, and I took a bunch of notes, but I'm not going to be able to remember the name, but someone made the comment that, you know, the folks that can only afford to come for a limited amount of time and not have a weekly rental sign-up are going to have the limitations of not having some of the hotel rooms being available to them. The hotel rooms that are currently there, we are seeing a decline. We're seeing some closed. And if, while, if an existing structure is damaged by an act of God, that structure can be rebuilt. You can't sell your existing property and build a new one. So, the updated strategy that someone brought up is very valid. So, what about those folks that have owned a hotel or they've owned property, and maybe part of their retirement is to be able to sell that property to another group? That group might not want a thirty- or forty-year-old hotel. And they might not want to have the inability to build a hotel on four, five, or six lots. I was in favor of this coming to the point where we could actually get public comments. And I'm glad we got a room full of people to get a lot of that because up to this point, it's been, I think, the same players, and we're getting the same comments, and those folks have been in support. So, it's nice to see a different viewpoint. I think that's all I have for the moment.
I agree with what Mike, with Commissioner Hogan said, and just wanted to reiterate the fact that really what this does is it kind of brings us into conformity with our two thousand and seven land use plan. So, where we're not really in agreement with that right now, we kind of are, in addition to the fact that the last two or three citizen surveys actually tell us that. I'm not discounting what we're being told here, but people drive from up north, and they pass several beaches that have a lot of hotels with a lot of density to get here because what Colleen said, we are special. And that's what I hear predominantly, that's what I hear every day. So, that's just what I'm hearing. I don't want to discount what I've heard tonight. I do want to ask a question, though, because Commissioner Judge brought this up. As far as his hotel being non-conforming when this, if this is passed, if we pass this as it is, it's my understanding that existing hotels are okay. And if an act of God happens and they meet a certain criteria, they can rebuild as is. Am I wrong?
That's correct. Generally speaking, the big elephant in the room is going to be CAMA or FEMA that might influence, but what our rules say, that you can build back to up to a hundred percent of what you had.
Right.
But, you know, as far as what CAMA rules might be in the event of a fire or a hurricane that takes half a lot away, that's a little bit up in the air.
But hypothetically, if we were to pass this tonight, and you've got a non-conforming structure, we're not going to go put a sticker on his door tomorrow and say, you're non-conforming. That's, I just wanted to make, because when I, you know, I've talked with the Planning Department several times on this, and it was my understanding that any existing structure that was non-conforming, because we have a couple, I wanted to make sure that we weren't doing any damage at all to those structures. Now, I understand completely that if you go to sell those structures, that that's going to be, that's a whole different story. But I just want to make sure that right now, today, tomorrow, you're not going to wake up tomorrow and it's going to be a whole different story.
And they would be non-conforming, it could be that there's flood issues, it could be that there's CAMA issues, it could be setback issues, lock coverage issues, and all kinds of things that don't have anything to do with floor area ratio.
Right.
And that was done when we, to try to help people secure financing, really. Because most lenders would go, well, gosh, I'm not going to finance something that you can't build back, you know? And that was done twenty-five years ago. That's been in our order since that long.
All right, but I just wanted to make sure with this, what we're passing, or what we're talking about, and what we're looking at right here doesn't influence something from one minute, you know, five minutes later, it doesn't influence something tremendously. So, that's really all I had right this moment. I want to reserve the right, if something comes up, my brain kind of muddles sometimes, there's a lot to take in here. So, thank you again for coming.
And I have a question, too. Nick, I don't know if you would mind, I'm going to put you on the spot with a question, but you did a really nice remodel to Shutter's. And was that in this time where we had the .6? Do you mind coming back up to the... I believe that was in the time during the .6, correct? And did that factor into your, what you were doing with your design, and ultimately?
The .6, whether we had it or not, I could have still have done what I did. The point, in other words, if it would have been .5 or .4, it would have prohibited me for what I've done. for what I've done. I mean, other than if you want to call my patio, you know, because, I mean, you know, I don't think it would affect anything. But I would like to clarify something. Greg, if, if, if I have a fire in 48 of my rooms, okay, are you telling me I can build that back?
Yes, sir. I'm telling you, Matt is just asking me about another building, and I, and it would be helpful to clarify, and maybe I can answer both questions, is that what happens is you would go to the Board of Commissioners, and, and they would say, "Well, what can you take care of?" And the one he talked about, we asked him to take out a driveway, and he said, "We didn't want to," and they didn't do it, you know? If there's things you can eliminate that are non-conformities, we try to, what's practicable to get rid of, we try to do that. And it, it just, you could come to, to the Board and get a permit to rebuild that structure if you lose 47.
Right. Well, in my opinion, based on my conversations through the years, talking to engineers and talking to Warren, the density, I know that I cannot build back if I have a catastrophic loss. My partner and I and our family are totally out of business because we can't put the 86 rooms back on that property. Okay? It's, it's no way possible. Now, what you're, tell me what you think.
We just did a quick rundown on your, your FAR on, on the oceanfront today, and, you know, granted, I didn't have much time to do it, but we, it's looked like a .297.
Right.
And that, that would mean that you could tear that down and build something quite a bit bigger than, than what you've got in terms of area.
Okay.
If we're calculating it properly.
All right.
So, maybe, maybe your engineer and I should talk.
Well, believe me, I think we will, but I'm still not of the opinion, Brandy, that I think, I think probably, I would suggest, honestly, a committee be formed, so that I think where the hotel people and condominium people, I personally think that, I know we're a little late to the chase, as Commissioner Travis had stated, you know, you've heard the same old thing, and, you know, here we are at the last minute, and I apologize for that. But I personally think a committee should be put together, table this thing, put a committee together, hotel, other businesspeople, a restaurant person that might be affected, and, and look at this thing. And then if the whole town decides, well, you know, the committee doesn't come up with anything but to change the floor space to .5 or .4, then we'll just go back to that. But I am not clear and do not believe that I can build my hotel back. And that's just my opinion. And the other thing that kicks in is this 50% rule. What's going to happen on that, Greg? If 50% of the building's destroyed, and the value, you can only build back the value of the structure, is that correct, or am I right?
I'm not sure which, which code you're trying to...
The 50% rule that you, that's now on the books, that if a business burns down more than the value of the building, you can't build it back.
I don't, I don't think that exists in the Kittle Hills Code or the building code.
All right. Well, I just renovated my Dairy Queen, and I had to supply y'all with a value, with a contract.
Yeah, that, that's part of the tax department wants that, yes, sir.
Right. Okay. But I can only build back the value that I wanted to renovate up to 50%.
Okay. Okay.
So, if a hotel's diminished, it's the same business would apply?
We're, we're muddling two different ordinances. One is a natural disaster ordinance, can y'all hear me? One is a natural disaster ordinance that if a natural disaster occurs, they can build back the property 100% of what it was prior to the disaster, fire, flood, hurricane. What he's talking about is, is a renovation to a non-conformity. And if you go in and you renovate of your own free will of a non-conforming structure, you can increase the non-conformity. And the way it's written now, it's if you, we have a point value system for non-conformities. You have to do certain things to be able to achieve certain remodels. But if you exceed 50% of the value of the structure, you, you basically have to come into compliance with the current zoning ordinance. That 50% is only applied for one year, and then you can do 50% again, another year, for a remodel. And then you can do 50% again, the year after that, for a remodel. But that's a voluntary remodel of a non-conforming structure, and the natural disaster is, it's wiped out, and, and you can rebuild it to 100% of what it was prior to the disaster. We ask that you reduce the non-conformity, but it is not required by ordinance that you do that.
Okay. So, you're talking about two different things. The first part that you're talking, the voluntary and the other is a natural disaster.
Correct.
So, there's two different things you're talking about there.
And you can renovate a non-conforming structure, we just have limits on how much renovation can be done at a time on that structure. And we also have an incentive program that you bring it more into compliance each time you renovate.
And that's the voluntary part, right? Now, the natural disaster, you can...
All bets are off, 100%.
That's different. Okay. All right. That's what I...
So, they're, they're two different ordinances, we're getting a little bit...
Right. But the natural disaster is part of this ordinance, the other is a whole separate ordinance, has nothing to do with this.
They're both in the, they're both in the non-conformities ordinance, and neither one have anything to do with the floor area ratio, to be honest. They're for everything.
Exactly.
They apply to all non-conforming structures in every zoning district in our town.
Right.
Not just...
They would only have something to do with it if...
Commercial or multi-family or hotel, it's all, everything.
If there was a natural disaster to a non-conforming building that happened to fall into something that we're talking about here. I understand.
Greg, I'd like to clarify one thing. So, in other words, national disaster includes if half our hotel burns down, is that correct? That's considered a national disaster? Okay. Sir?
Unless it's something that's caused, if you decide to tear it down...
Unless you do it.
Okay.
Then you're going to jail.
All right. Okay. Let me speak about, if you, if y'all have just a, another minute, I'd like to speak about remodel. The way the law is then, okay, they corrected me, if, what, what the 50% rule does, it discourages businesses from even doing any remodel. Is the town's vision down the road 20 years from now to tell an owner, "We don't want you to spend any money," or do you want to look at a decrepit building? And I, I think that that needs being taken a look at. So, Sheila, did I answer your question?
You did, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
So, I guess, one of the things that I would like to have more discussion on, because this was brought up by so many people in the room, and, and I will tell you, prior to some phone calls and some letters from some of the folks that are here with us tonight, you know, one of the phone calls specifically asked, asked me, you know, "Well, what is, what is Kittle Hills' vision for hotels?" And obviously, I couldn't give them a state. I could give them my vision and what I thought, which I think hotels are, you know, a vital component of our community, and for many of the reasons that, that were shared here tonight. But, you know, I know my first trip down, well, no, my first trip was to a campground, but the second trip with my family, we stayed in a hotel. And so, you know, if you can ask me personally what I think, I think, you know, we have to take that, a lot of these thoughts into consideration. What I couldn't speak of was how much of this was part of the conversation to get us here till tonight? Because we hadn't had these discussions, we hadn't had the, the emails and, and the phone calls. And I know, I don't, well, I don't recall us having a discussion as a board about hotels in general, about what is our vision for hotels. I think there's, I believe that the staff, our staff have thought about this a lot, and I know that they responded to our calls and emails today for some clarification. I understand that there's some, whether it's fear, or valid or not, about, as, as Nick shared, you know, if they did have the natural disaster, and if they are trying to rebuild, you know, can they truly do it? It's, it makes them really nervous, because if we do adopt something that's going to tie their hands, not only will they lose the value, but we also may see an unattended, unintended consequence of, of our decision, where we actually have been more of the, the big monster beach homes, instead of what we really need for people, which are hotels to really come and, as someone else mentioned, diversifying what our accommodations are. So, it's a, it's kind of a, a bit of a tricky position, that I don't know personally that I've sat in enough discussions to hear whether they've been part of the community appearance or, or part of our discussions, or part of the planning board, to look at it from this perspective. I think there's a couple of things that were posed tonight that are worthy of further explanation, and, and the possibility of having some special, you know, overlay district with hotels, or pulling out hotels from the multifamily dwellings. You know, Travis, you mentioned, you know, we, we've been talking about how we didn't include single-family homes in this, but does that need to be revisited as, as well? So, I feel like I'm asking more questions than I, than I am giving comment, but to me, that signifies that I may not have looked at everything thoroughly enough to be prepared to cast a vote.
Yeah. I, I was curious if we could pull hotels out, if, if it was possible. I don't know. I'd be interested in tabling it.
Would that, would, um, by, by pulling it out of this particular proposal that we have here, is that, you know, possibly saying that .6 is okay with a hotel? And if, and if that's not the case, then we are where we should be. If you're saying, "Well, everybody else has to be .4," maybe with incentives, "But hotels can still be .6," then we're just defeating the purpose of what we went through all these months, because we're still going to allow .6-sized buildings. Is that where we want to go? If that's where we want to go, then pulling it out would be the thing to do. But if we want to limit the size of the buildings by reducing this, then pulling that out isn't, there's no purpose in it.
Well, I know for me, and, and we can't put staff on the spot right here, because it would be unfair to try to do calculations that normally you check and recheck and make sure they're right. But just the mere fact that, and I'm not picking on anyone, Nick, I'm just using this as an example, you know, when he was commenting that he didn't think he could rebuild his hotel to what it is now, but to hear Greg say they ran through some rough calculations, and actually, he's nowhere near the .6. I would be really curious, with our hotel structures, is this a fact that this isn't as big of an issue as we think it is, if we really ran the numbers and did calculations? Or, or is it? And I don't know, you know, I don't know that we have enough information, because if we found out that it's, you know, he's just barely getting to .3, that's really a, not a big issue, you know? Then, then really going to the .4 with the opportunity to get to .5 would not be a detriment to his particular property. How that would affect the other hotels in our town, I don't know. I don't have that answer. But...
We, we've done a, a report on that a while back, and, and I'll just say that what Brian is the First Flight Retreat is Matt's .39, is it? Something like that? I believe it's not, it doesn't reach .4.
They're right.
I, I feel pretty certain about the...
Meredith, did you have?
We, we did, we did run numbers back when the original floor area ratio was done, and we used site plans with the size of the land versus the size of the building, and how many stories were in the building, and all its subalternances. And we did 26 hotel and condominiums, not, you know, not just hotels, but hotels and condominiums that were on the oceanfront. And of the 26, 16 of those, or 61%, were under the .4, and 77% of them were under the .5, for the numbers, for the, the ones that we, we didn't inventory every single one, but we did a large majority of the ones that, at the time, looked biggest on the oceanfront, because that was the discussion about what the floor area ratio was, was, did it mean this, or did it mean this? Because we were moving from a density unit per acre to a floor area ratio, and it was very hard to calibrate that into what it looks like. And that's why the study was done. And so, 77% of the structures, some of the ones we did were Seawalk Condos, Breakers Condos, the Ramada Inn, the Clarion, High Dunes, Admirals III, the Beach Club, Station One, the Best Western, the Comfort Inn, the Gulf Stream condominiums, the Sea Oat Villas, Seven Seas condominiums, Golden Strand, Crystal Shores, Scrimshaw, Scrimshaw II, Admirals II, Sands condominiums, Wellington by the Sea, the Sea Ranch Hotel, First Flight Retreat, and Casa del Sol.
Those are what?
And we did, we did Victoria's Place, but that's in the commercial zone, and the commercial zone well exceeds .6 in a floor area ratio with the current regulations that they have in the commercial zone. You can build above that now. So, we took that out of the calculations we did. So, 61% were in compliance with the .4, and 77% were in compliance with the .5 with the incentive.
Thank you.
And the Seven Seas is being rebuilt under the casualty clause. They came back to the Board. Everybody probably remembers that site plan. Sorry they lost their condos. That's .42, according to them. Just for, just kind of getting, you know, what is all...
An idea.
It's easier for us to sit and turn the numbers around. And I'd be the first one to say, we don't have to adopt this tonight wherever the Board doesn't want to, and I'd be happy to sit down with anybody and discuss the numbers and, and get myself educated.
A question, Greg, on lot coverage, and how that apply, how that compares to FAR. And the question that I want to get to is, the homes that are currently being built on the ocean, what's the largest home that can be built? And how much of the lot could truly be covered there with the setbacks, and then with the parking, and, and that type of thing?
Well, what, what you have is you, the, the definition for a lot areas, from first line of stable natural vegetation back to, you know, your property line, the beach road. And you can cover 55% in that area. Of course, some of that area is reserved for CAMA as a setback, and we have the side yards setback. So, whatever you can fit, if you can figure out how to do your stormwater and parking, and maybe underneath the house, or however it goes, you can cover up 55%. Confirmed.
Does anything change, whether you're doing a rebuild, or for whatever reason the rebuild happens, with regards to parking and overall lot coverage that's not part of the FAR discussion?
FAR doesn't really have anything to do with the parking or the lot coverage at all.
That, that's why I'm asking.
We're talking about the size of the structure you can build that's heated, and, and Meredith pretty much talked about how, you know, we could tear it down and build it back, because you want to build something different. You know, your choice, as opposed to what Mr. Nuzzi was concerned about, that maybe a fire, you know, being different. And that's a whole nother discussion.
Another question back at either Skip or Sue, or both. Because Sue, I, I was not able to attend the last couple of meetings, and Skip, either one or both of you could comment. Did any of this part of the conversation come up, or has anything that we've discussed here with that, did it come up during y'all's conversations, specifically looking at, at hotels and that part of the vision? Or, and/or to my question, would anything that you're hearing come up have changed your discussion at the Community Appearance Committee?
I would welcome comments from anybody else on the CAC who's here. I don't really lead the attitude issue of the hotels. I, I don't think that that was a concern at all, obviously, this time. As to the question of whether any of this influences what we might have done differently, I feel like we took a lot of things into consideration. And originally, as I said, and I'm not too interested in a .4, with the possibility of a .4. And so, now we're looking at .4 to .5, which seems to be a relatively small distinction. And since Meredith did such a good job of mentioning that, we did look very much at the issue of who's in compliance, who would be in compliance with .4, .5, and the overwhelming majority of what's existed. I don't know that specifically addresses your question. We did not take up all the issues that have been raised here tonight, although I, I feel as if, my, my feeling is that this change... as if, my, my feeling is that this change would not dramatically impact on, on all the concerns that have been raised here tonight. That, that the concerns don't apply in, in a major way with the change.
Meredith?
Yes. Hi, sir. Hi, I'm Chris Shea. I live in Hill Devil Hills. I've been involved in these discussions both with the CAC and planning board. And these issues never came up with CAC. But what we have to remember is the CAC is an appearance committee and that's what we're supposed to be trying to improve. So these things that didn't come up in the appearance committee, some of them did come up in the planning board. And we had a lot of discussion about developers being able to get, you know, their money's worth out of their investments and all of those kinds of things. But after a lot of discussion, the proposal did pass with the, um, the four, four and a half and five FAR. Not these things specifically, but generally development and economic issues were discussed at the planning board level. To be perfectly honest, I'm not sure that my vote would not have changed. I, I would need to think about this a lot more after what I've heard tonight before I would vote again. That being said, another factor that we did discuss at the planning board level, I think, was how much of the tax base of the town is on the oceanfront. And if we had catastrophic permisses on oceanfront and we lost all of this real estate, what kind of financial position was that going to put us in in the short term? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Skip, did you want to add anything?
Just briefly. I might have mentioned my experience with this goes back to when we had the stockholders' meetings and the hotels, oceanfronts and whatnot. And I've always been a big proponent of, I want to see the sightlines, you know, well, I want to ride down the beach road and be able to see the ocean. I'm not trying to hold back the amount of rooms or square footage or any of that stuff for hotels, condos, whatever it might be. Personally, my feelings were I'd rather see the motels go up a floor but bring them in on the sides. I don't think it affects everything as much. That's just my personal opinion. That's what I've tried to push through these committees that I've been on. But I, I think it's, to me, it's pretty obvious. When you ride down the road and you see the new buildings at whatever they are, they've got to be close to a point six, I'm sure. But does anybody know what the Croatan Surf Club or...
Point six.
Point six. To me, it's, it's obvious that that's not what we, if you do that time after time after time, I really think that's not what we want to see in Hill Devil Hills. If you went up 10, 12 feet, what, I don't think there'd be a, it's a whole different issue really. But that's just my personal opinion. I'd rather see a motel gain 12 foot or 15 foot and be able to have service trucks, be able to get underneath them easily without being, you know, everybody tries to keep them as, as low as possible and you can't get main, maintenance people and Chris with his rental trucks and all that underneath of them. And then you get all these flat roofs and all that looks horrible to me. I mean, I'd rather see them go up a little bit, look nice, but bring in the sides a little bit. I just think that wall-to-wall building is what we're trying to get away from. You know, it's not the amount of rooms, the amount of people or any of that. And I, I think that can be achieved personally. And it might be, take a little bit more discussion and, you know, it might be, you have to work with it in a different area or a different direction possibly, but that's, that's just my feeling. We're not trying to limit anything really, other than we want to be able to see the ocean and we think people come down here, they want to see the ocean as well. So anyway, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm freezing.
Yeah, I'm cold too.
It is cool in here.
Sorry, I'm like really cold.
It's cold in here.
We got cold today. Yeah. It's not that I'm nervous about the topic, I'm just freezing. So we're going to adjust it. We're going to make an adjustment, try to make the room a little more comfortable. It's chilly. Okay, further discussion?
A question on my math abilities, which I'm very forthcoming and that's not my strong suit. From the point six to a point four, is that 33% reduction? And point six to point five is a 20% reduction? So we might be saying that we're not making a whole lot of change and we're not trying to limit property owners, but a, a 33 or a 20% reduction is pretty considerable. I, I think the reason we haven't seen something like the Croatan Surf Club come back since 2007 is because the climate's not there and the space isn't here right now. But the space is here for these large homes. I'd like to propose that we table this and in the discussions, future discussions, that we would add in those large family homes. And I'd be interested to see what folks' perspective on those major cottages, how they truly feel about how they fit in our land use plan, not just condos or, or hotels. But that would be my preference.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd agree with Travis. I mean, there's a lot of opposition here today, so...
I'm, um, I'm supportive of tabling it if we have a plan moving forward, meaning I don't want to just table it and it's said. A lot of people have invested a lot of time in getting here. So tabling it with, we're scheduling a workshop or something, you know, I would like action tied to the tabling so we're not just leaving it to an indefinite amount of time and, and not ultimately getting to a decision. That would be my recommendation along with what you all suggested.
Well, I think we have to make sure we understand what our goal is if that's what you're saying.
I agree.
And if we just, if the talk is to get hotels out of the picture and then hotels is different from condos as far as the floor area ratio is concerned, then you could end up having the same thing with whoever's is point four and whoever's is now point five. So the original intent was to talk about the appearance and, and the aspect of that appearance is the mass of the buildings. It didn't say whether they were single-family homes or hotels or condo units or townhouses. The issue was how big is the building on the oceanfront? How big should we allow it to be? And if we're saying now that we're going to possibly table it and relook at the situation, then we have to be willing to say we're going to allow them maybe to be where it is now or we're going to lower it. But I'm not so sure it's fair to say the hotels can be point six maybe that down the line if that's where it goes.
And condos can't.
And then we'd have a room full of condo people.
Right.
So we really do have to have an erection.
Well, but you just mentioned single-family homes too, which that's not included. And to Travis's point, maybe that should be as well if we are truly, this started from the, the community appearance and I think that's what some of what we're hearing tonight is why are we putting two entities in there but not the third entity if we are truly focused on the, the appearance? I'm not, I, I still support lowering the FAR. So not to give any hotel person here the impression that, that I don't think we should touch it. I think we should. What I want to know is, you know, what does lowering that to five, what's the impact on our hotels if they want to rebuild or redesign or just try to stay up for modern conveniences to make sure that someone selects that hotel or that we, we don't find ourselves 10 years from now with dilapidated hotels who, they can't get the return on the investment by upgrading them or updating them. But I also am very keen on looking at why are we excluding single-family homes from this type when, when they also contribute to the appearance, these monster homes that almost look like, you know, many hotels? And, and I think it just, to me signifies further discussion, but not, my position is not state, not wanting that discussion because I don't think I'm going to support lowering the FAR. It's just who are we lowering it for and what are the implications across the board for our diversification of, of revenue by doing that? Would you all be willing to, I mean, I, you know, for all the people that came out tonight, we needed this. I mean, this, as I started the meeting, knowing how many people were in the room, I said this is great government inaction and it really is. We need the same type of input and action if we are doing a workshop, you know, where you can just interact and that we're, we're continuing to get comments and feedback. I feel like we might be at the position, when I say workshop, of having members from the planning board, members from the board and members from the Community Appearance Committee engaged in this and looking at all three seg, uh, segments, single-family homes, motels, multifamily homes, and the implications of all of that.
I'll volunteer my time.
Yeah.
Same here.
Yeah, so between now and whenever we do get together, group and meet, we can, uh, just, we can decide who that's going to be and...
And I, and I would like to say that I know we have, we have one meeting right now. Well, actually, we don't have any meeting scheduled because that's later under the mayor's agenda, our schedule for next year. We likely will have one meeting scheduled in January, so we could possibly do it towards the end of the month because we don't, we're not proposing right now a meeting. And that may need, could be a night meeting or it could be a day workshop, but I think it would be time well spent. And I, I think we still need the same stakeholders that have been looking at this engaged, but now some of the other stakeholders that came out tonight, we need them to stay engaged in the conversation with us.
Yeah, I'd just like to say one, a couple of things. I'm, I'm really glad everybody come out and I appreciate it because we really do like, you know, hearing what you have to say and these nice congenial discussions are very helpful to us. And I want to thank the, uh, the CAC for, for their work. They did exactly what they were tasked to do. And the planning board for taking the information that was given to them and elaborating on it and looking at some other aspects of it and getting it to us with as much information as we had when we walked in here. Now we have more, so I think we're better off for it.
Right. And I think, I know Colleen during the public hearing, well, I guess we're still in it, but Colleen Almody brought up about, you know, being mindful of the land use plan. And I know that came up in a number of conversations before and, and personally, that's, that's why I'm still incredibly, incredibly supportive of doing something with the FAR to be consistent with the land use plan. And so as we move forward the workshop, you know, I think I still want to be very mindful of that with whatever we decide to come back and propose.
The same here. And I, and I, and I said something about the, the citizen surveys and I, and I think, and, and I wish I, I had a copy of the land use plan and the surveys with me because I, I think if we had brought in the fact that, that we, if we brought this, this discussion in and we brought some questions in about the fact that, that some of the hotel rooms might disappear, would, would that affect your decision on this? That, that might actually change, um, change some answers on that because I think hotel rooms are probably a very important thing to a lot of people, both tourists and locals. So, um, and of course, we're talking about locals that are answering those questions, but, um, as we say this, I, I think two things that we, we definitely need in this are, are some, some pretty good numbers as far as the implications on, on what the differences are. Because when I talked to you earlier, I, that, I don't think 30% was the number that we talked about.
Are you talking about, uh, the survey?
Yeah, I will know about the, the, the decrease in, um, revenue. Um, and maybe we didn't talk about that. Maybe I just, maybe we talked about so much that I didn't, a, a change in, change in use, but, um, at any rate, I mean, you, you were crunching numbers here and maybe I just, maybe that went away, but at any rate, the, the nu, the difference in the numbers between a point, point six and a point four-five or a point five, that, that might help us. And then the actual FAR for some of these hotels that we're talking about here. I mean, I, I know some, some of the folks sitting here don't agree with your numbers, but by far, if I were them, I'd be taking your numbers over the numbers they have if they think they're, they're over. That, that would be, y'all are going to be the ones that are policing this. So that's, I mean, that's, that's all I ask. I know it's a little bit of work, but, um, if, if we could do that, that, that would, I think that would help tremendously if, if it's not too much to ask.
So, um, basically we need to come to some action tonight. Of course, our options were to approve, disapprove or table. So a motion, i-if we're prepared to go to that stage now, a motion would be in order to table this, could add to that motion that we schedule a workshop in late January. So is anyone prepared to make a motion of such or another motion?
Does it need to include the consent agenda or not the consent agenda, but the consistency statement?
No, not if we're, if we're tabling, you, you would not need that at all.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we, we table the recommended amendment to chapter 153 zoning, reduction of the floor area ratio to a later meeting and in addition, schedule a workshop for first quarter of 2015. And I'll say first quarter just because we've got to figure out what our dates are, so...
Oh, that's right, yeah. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion?
At second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion, questions, further comment related to the motion or topic?
No.
All those in favor, please stick now by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight and for those of you who communicated with us. And for those of you who are here and if this, if you were here for the FAR, please stay tuned and connected because we seriously want your input and participation when we schedule our workshop. Okay, thank you.
Gretchen's like, what have I done? She's here for the transportation plan. She's like, man, why did I schedule this on this night?
What, the transportation?
I don't think it's very, I, I doubt it's very, I need something stiffer than water.
Oh, yeah. We, we still have another public hearing. I don't think...
Guys, want to take a five minute break?
Yes, might as well.
Yeah, I don't think our next public hearing will be like this.
We're going to take just a couple minute recess. We will call our, we will call our meeting back to order, so thank you. And, um, we still have more public hearings.
We have two more public hearings. All right, the, the next public hearing is involving a recommended local historic designation for 1311 North Virginia Deer Trail, the Beverage Wild Cottage, and I think Meredith is going to speak to that.
Those, that one, that first one was the easy one.
Yeah. Okay.
I think I need to leave.
Do you want to say something?
I'm trying to find Chriese's.
Attached is a designation ordinance for 1311 North Virginia Deer Trail, the Beverage Wild Cottage. This cottage we are designating is only a portion of the property. It's not both houses. There's two houses on this property and we are designating the Western Most House, which is the original house. It's called the George. And it was, um, your ordinance is in your packet. I would love to be able to quickly tell you when it was built. I think it was 1936. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions of Meredith about this?
Any questions?
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? All right, there is no other public comment?
Bless you. Okay, so discussion, comments from the board?
Sounds good.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that we designate the 1311 North Virginia Dare Trail, the Beveridge Wild Cottage, for our historic designation.
I'll second that.
Any other comments or question, discussion? All those in favor, please stick now by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, the next public hearing is for 21 South Virginia Dare Trail, the Christensen Small Cottage for a public, for a local historic designation. Meredith?
Yes, sir. This cottage is one of our younger cottages that we've designated. It was built in 1962 by Billy Gray. He was a longtime resident of Kill Devil Hills and also our building inspector, our chief building inspector for, for years. Project was, the house was built right after 1962. It was recently renovated by the current owners, the Smalls, and they renovated, the renovations included taking off vinyl siding and re-exposing the original siding and wood, and all the original interiors also intact, and it's a, it's a really good example of, of our typical beach box. It was built in the late 50s, early 60s.
Any questions for Meredith? Anyone else wish to speak? Justice to this public hearing.
Our motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we designate 2021 South Virginia Dare Trail a local historic designation.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please stick now by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Great additions. Okay. We will now move on to the first opportunity for public comment for the, to the board. This is one of two opportunities tonight for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone that's in the audience to speak to the board on any topic. We do ask if you're speaking, if you're speaking as an individual, if you identify yourself by name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask that you please limit those comments to five minutes. Mary, we had a sign-up sheet. Did anyone? Okay, but I see Chairman here to speak, so welcome, Bob. Oh, sorry.
Bob Woodard, 2305 Bay Drive, Kill Devil Hills. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm here tonight to invite you guys to the First Dare County Public Forum. It'll be held January the 14th at 6:30 in our Chamber Building, and I'd like to ask the citizens of Kill Devil Hills to attend, looking forward to this, get public comment, just like you guys have done in the past. And I think those workshops really work good. So I'm here to just encourage y'all to come and encourage the citizens of Kill Devil Hills to participate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bob.
Matt?
Thank you. My name's Matthew Byrne. I'm at 1623 Wood Duck Lane. I'm very pleased, Miss Mayor and Commissioners, that both Mr. Judge and Mr. Woodard are here this evening because I've also had an opportunity to speak in front of the Dare County Commissioners on this topic. I've approached this board in the past with regard to the gun range in Nag's Head slash Kill Devil Hills, and I know that the town has no jurisdiction over that property, nor the gun range, so I'd like to approach it from a different tact if I can this evening. And I'd like to see if there's any opportunity to have a discussion with the county, the town of Kill Devil Hills, and the town of Nag's Head to free the Fresh Pond, take the fence off that property, make it a municipal park, and thereby have to close down that gun range because it's just too close. And I think that would serve our community very well to have that 27 acres of property freed, been under lock and key for 34 years. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Sue, are you? Okay.
Hi, Sue Kelly, Sea Village Lane. I just want to say, as a former U.S. government teacher, I thought what happened here tonight was really cool. It's democracy at work. And the one thing that I would like to see us try to figure out how to do is to bring all of this kind of comment and involvement to earlier stages in working on these projects. Philip Ruckel has done a great job of publicizing the work of, of this board, as well as the CAC and the Planning Board, so hope we can do our responsible job to involve people at all levels of the development. But tonight was cool. Whatever happens, happens, and I believe that democracy is, will work it out, that y'all will do the right thing. And thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay. Seeing no hands, we will move on to response to public comment.
Matt, I just want to say that I know, this has been brought up before by you and others, and I, I would really hope something could be done about it, and speaking for myself, not as, not as the board, but I'd be happy to discuss, seeing if something can be done about it. I can hear it at my house, I have to confess, in a far enough way that it's really not that annoying, but I can, there's no question I can hear it. And sometimes I imagine, I can imagine what it sounds like when you're next door like you are, so, yeah. So I'd be anxious to speak to any, any of the stakeholders that want to get involved and talk about that issue.
Well, before Warren leaves... I believe we might be, we, we might be having lunch tomorrow, and also we'll be joined, in fact, Chairman Woodard will likely be there. It's the mayor's lunch, and anyway, I, I believe Warren is joining us, I think Bob is joining us, and I believe the, certainly the mayor from Nag's Head. So we could start the discussion then at that table. I would, I will bring it up, and then we'll see where it goes from there. Warren, if you would help me start that discussion tomorrow, that would be great. I'm not trying to keep you much longer. We'll discuss it tomorrow if you're able to join us for lunch.
I'm gonna try my best.
Okay, great.
As a, I, I think my house might even be closer than, than Matt's. So, I mean, I, I know I've brought it up before, and the times have been shortened. However, all, it's a standing invitation that if you can hear it at your house, you're more than welcome to come over, we'll sit on the back deck and, and have a cold beverage and, and enjoy it with me. When, when I worked from home, I would have to discontinue conference calls and leave my house because it was that loud. And, you know, I picked my home office, the bedroom that it's in, because I could see Fresh Pond, and, you know, it's a nice view. I'm probably one of the few people that can actually see it from their house, and I'd have to leave, it was that loud. And we have canceled cookouts and things like that because of the noise. We talked about potentially doing disc golf back there at some point, when, earlier in the stages, when we were potentially looking at a joint venture between Nag's Head and, and Kill Devil Hills. But, I mean, what a beautiful area to be able to have a disc golf course back there around the lake, and I certainly wouldn't mind sitting on my deck and seeing people walking back there and enjoying it, so you'll get my support on whatever we can do here.
All right, and to Sue's comment, I absolutely echo, I think many of us do, that if we can get folks engaged in the discussions earlier, that would be great, and there, there may be something more that, obviously, people come out when they realize the, you know, potential of the finality of a decision tonight with a public hearing, but perhaps there are opportunities that we can try to put the information out, maybe in different outlets, that it's going to come to this, so we'll have to be mindful of that. But I, I agree that if we can get input earlier, it then trickles through the different, you know, it goes before you all, it goes before the Planning Board until just getting to the comment at, at the Commissioners' meeting. It'd be nice to have it at the different levels of discussion.
Can we go back just one?
Sure.
Because I can, I, I don't know that I can see the concern, but I know there's concern for, on Chief Britt's mind about the, the gun range. When y'all had that discussion, in, in that discussion, could you at least discuss the possibilities of places to have another gun range other than where one is? Because we have law enforcement officers, there's a lot of law enforcement officers in Dare County, and they have to maintain certifications, and, and that's, that's the one place right now where they can do that. So I, I know, I know it's obnoxious. I, I know it is, but, but there are cer- certain certifications that they absolutely have to have, and they have to shoot a certain number of rounds, so I just, I just want to put that out there, so, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. And, and to be fair, I know there's day and night certifications, and then all of the municipalities have to use it, and it's one of the few that have lighting. Which, somebody had asked me a question at the shop not that long ago, and I didn't know the answer to it, and then I actually forgot about it, and I apologize. I will apologize to them as well, but is it possible to have an indoor gun range?
Yes.
It is.
With our current ordinances and, and building codes and things like that?
Oh, I don't, I don't know about, in town. I don't even know if we have a large enough location.
Well, you remember at the beginning, they said we were the boss.
We could change the...
In that little video clip, though.
I mean, you know, it... The, and my, and my question is, is one, I, I know other areas where they've had indoor ranges, and then, I mean, law enforcement has free rein, and in fact, they welcome it because the added protection of, of, you know, uniformed officers in the facility is, is a benefit.
And they can do night certifications during the day?
Right.
Well, it's funny that you bring that up because not too long ago, someone was having a conversation talking about what new businesses could they bring in to town, and this came up about an indoor range because there are, being that we're such a wedding destination, and how many of the bachelor... Hold on, hold on, let me...
New term of shotgun wedding.
No, 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 no. Hold on, hear me out, hear me out. So apparently, a big thing for the groom, groom and groomsmen to do is to go, you know, like, the ladies will do their hair and nails. Anyway, they go on these trips to go to the, the shooting range, and they are driving, I don't know if they're driving to Virginia or where they're driving, but I know of a number of people recently that have done that. The guys go to a shooting range, and I don't know where the closest indoor range is, but they're going to an indoor range.
What are they practicing for?
I don't know, but I'm just saying, it's an activity other than going golfing, what the guys go do while the ladies are doing their thing, so, anyway.
I mean, the closest one would be by the Dare County landfill.
Yeah, but that's not indoors.
Yeah, I don't know where the closest indoor was.
Oh, the indoor, closest indoors.
I don't know if that's Virginia or, I don't know if Elizabeth City has it, but anyway, something to think about.
I know they're very expensive to build indoors with all the OSHA regulation and everything. Very expensive.
Well, certainly warrants a lot of discussion.
Yeah, just gotta bring that up, sorry.
And, and Sue, I, I completely agree with your comments of getting people engaged early. Michael and I had the sidebar, along with Brandy and Mike, of being able to, if, it, it's nice to get it as far as we did with staff and our normal group of players. And then, but then, you shouldn't really have to get it all the way to an official public hearing in order to get the feedback that we got tonight. And we've, we've bounced ideas around on how to get higher attendance in, in all of our meetings and...
We know what the answer is.
Margaritas.
Margaritas, we did talk about that, so I'm not sure how Mr. Michael feels about that, but, but, I mean, it, it, I don't know how you, how you do it any differently. I mean, I know, I've seen some of us do individual Facebook posts to those that are following us on Facebook or something, but, you know, that doesn't really hit it from a, you know, a town-wide coverage, anyway, so.
Mock public hearings. I don't know if that's the answer. Okay, anything else before we move on? All right, we'll move on to new business. Item number one under new business is the presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2013, 2014, and the award of excellence for excellence in financial reporting for fiscal year 2013. So, sorry, I'm not even moving through into my agenda yet, but let's see. I know we have Teresa Osborne here with the CPA firm Doughty &amp; Osborne, and she's going to present us with our audit.
We've cleared the room.
Welcome.
How are you doing tonight? I'm here tonight to present the results of your June 30th, 2014 Annual Independent Audit. The town has received an unqualified opinion on its financial statements, which is the best opinion you can receive, and this is found on pages one and two of your audit report. Additionally, there were no findings related to internal control over financial reporting or over compliance with laws, regulations, and grants, and this report is found on pages 141 and 142. The town prepares a comprehensive annual financial report, which is a step beyond the basic required financial statements and disclosures. It includes significant additional statistical data that more fully presents the town's financial history and performance. Beverly is gonna cover the detailed numbers in the audit report, and I just want to share with you a couple of highlights on the major funds of the town. In the general fund, the town's unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2014 was $6,622,000, which represents 41.98% or five months of total general fund expenditures for the year, and this is in compliance with the town's minimum fund balance policy. In the water fund, there was a positive increase in net assets. Operating and capital revenues covered operating expenses and depreciation. In the wastewater fund, there was a decrease in net assets. Although operating revenues are sufficient to cover operating expenses, it is insufficient to cover all of the depreciation. The tax collection rate on ad valorem taxes was 99.4%, which is an extremely high and excellent collection rate. Overall, the town ended the year in excellent financial condition, and I just want to thank the Finance Department who did an excellent job in putting together the comprehensive annual financial report and for providing me with the information that I needed to do to support, the support I needed to do the, to prepare the audit opinion, and I look forward to working with the town in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Beverly Kissinger will join us and go through some numbers.
Yes, first of all, I would like to let you know that we did, the town was awarded a certificate of achievement in excellence in financial reporting for the June 30th, 2013 year. We do have a certificate, and like we used to have our plaques on the wall, now we have a single plaque and our button, so, anyway, I'll leave this with you. I would like to thank my finance staff for their participation in preparation of the CAFR. I'd like to thank Sharon is here tonight, Amy Miller. They really took a lead on it. If it wasn't for them, it wouldn't be here tonight, I don't believe. But that, as well as the other departments, it's, it is definitely a group effort, a town-wide effort, and I thank the board for your continued support of the CAFR program.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll try to get...
Remember your training?
Oh, I'm gonna try. Forward. The, I'm gonna give you a few highlights of the year. Our assets exceeded liabilities. This is the town's net worth, $39,500,000. Of that, governmental assets pose 22 point, can't see, 22.6, and enterprise, which is the water fund and the wastewater fund, 16.8 million. Net position increased for the town by 1.5 million from last year. This just kind of gives you a visual of how we have progressively grown over time. Pretty consistent, yet a little increase. The blue, I believe, is the governmental assets, and the green is the enterprise assets.
It says enterprises.
I'm sorry, do I have that backwards? I can't see that small, thank you. All right, our governmental fund balances are $10,300,000. That's all fund balances. That includes restricted, assigned, everything, but the undesignated or unassigned fund balance is at $6 million, and of that, 45... is at $6 million, and of that, 45.3% is that target range that we like to keep at your 35% policy. And again, a little picture to show you where that unassigned fund balance has been over time. Again, it's pretty, been pretty consistent the last several years, and a little bit more. Um, our debt is, um, I just wanted to inform you that the debt is $3 million. I can't.
$664,000.
Three, thank you. And our, our water fund is $45,000. Again, I like the pictures. Here, here's our ratio of debt service, which is our lease payments to the general fund And that is less than 6%. Our general fund, um, operating, the operating fund, the general fund is the operating fund for the town. The primary revenues are, um, mostly ad valorem tax. At least half of our revenues come from ad valorem tax. The other third comes from land transfer and occupancy taxes. So, that's our main sources of revenue. Our operating expenses are predominantly, um, the general government, public safety, which is the largest section, transportation, public works, and environmental protection. This just shows you the general fund budget to actual. The first two, um, columns are, the blue columns are budget, and the green are actual. The first two are revenues. Um, actual revenues were above budgeted revenues, and actual expenditures were below budgeted Our assessed value of taxable property in millions is approximately $2 billion. And basically, what that says is for every penny, we generate $200,000. This is the sales tax, um, total for the countywide trend. This is all the sales tax that comes back to the county. That total was $23.7 million. Again, the economy looks good, it looks growing, it's increasing over time. These are the sales taxes that come back specifically to Kill Devil Hills. This was 1.9 million this year, a good 200,000 increase over last year. This is important when we're starting to talk about that shared revenue formula. Um, the green, the, the red line indicates the countywide, um, distribution of sales tax, which is growing. You see, it's, it's increasing, and Kill Devil Hills is increasing a little, but it just gives you the, um, perspective of where we are from the total. Okay, occupancy tax revenues, again, are increasing. We've had a, a period last year, but this year, they are on the rise. Occupancy tax revenue this year is 2.1 million. Again, there's the county trend, which is 21.6 million versus 2.1 million in Kill Devil Hills, and that does, and that does, um, account for the additional 1% occupancy that was, um, imposed January 1st of this past year. So, that's six months' worth of that additional. Okay, land transfer tax, um, just a, just, that's an indicator of sales in our economy here. At one time, it was a significant source of revenue. It has decreased quite a bit over time, but it has been steady over time, in the 400,000 range. Yep. Now, I gotta go back to the surplus one, because that is, that is our surplus sales report for the year. Please, Mary? Some of our, most of these items are sold on a, um, auction site called GovDeals. Okay, some of our major initiatives, this, that were completed this year, um, the multi-use path, the Northwest area streets, Raymond Avenue, North Kitty Hawk Shores, and the US 158 sidewalk project. And when I say that some of these are completed this year, some of them were started this year, during that year. And then, we have 242,000 in water line adjustments associated with the street drainage projects. In addition to other major initiatives, include lease proceeds in the amount of $2.1 million, um, that, those assets that were purchased or improvements that were made with that money. The most significant one is the new ladder truck. Beach nourishment spending for the year was 258,000 on engineering costs. Some of the grants for the year, um, the first one from, and the largest, was from Dare County Shoreline Management. Um, they are reimbursing a portion of the cost that we are, um, contract for the year for beach nourishment, as well as some sand fencing, um, the tourism bureau, uh, multi-use path grant, on down to the body armor. These are your capital reserve funds and their balances at the end of June 2014. These are some of the capital reserve funds with some activity in them. The 400,000, which was budgeted, um, for streets and stormwater ma- management, disbursements from that fund, leaving that ba- fund a balance of $60,000. The beach nourishment fund, which, um, county reimbursements were 205, 288. We dispersed 253, 166, and we currently, at, well, June 30th, there was a balance of 914, The wireless communications, which is a special revenue fund, this is the cell phone, um, companies on the water tower. Um, the tower lease revenue for the year totaled $100,000. There is some interest on that account. There are expenses, management fees, et cetera, um, to collect that revenue, and the balance at June 30th is 500,000. Power bill funds, um, used for the year to, for operating expenses, as well as the north area, Northwest area project, and a balance of 26,000. Okay, this is the water fund. We have budgeted revenues to budgeted expend, and actual revenues, which are higher than budgeted revenues, and, um, actual expenditures, which are lower than budgeted expenditures. So, your budget's in the blue column, the actuals are in the green. And as Teresa, um, reported, there was a not, a net operating income of 69,000, which included, um, about 754,000 of depreciation. So, I think we priced our, our fund, uh, our, we're priced right in that range. The water fund, um, had a 0.71% increase in the wholesale water rate, which we purchased from Dare County. The wastewater fund, our report, um, the budgeted revenues are slightly above budgeted, um, excuse me, actual revenues were slightly above budgeted revenues, actual expenditures are below budgeted expenditures. Again, there was an accrual operating loss of about $60,000, but again, that considered 126,000 of depreciation. So, the total amount owed, which is, um, there is a debt to the wastewater, excuse me, to the water fund, from the wastewater fund, that is, um, currently being budgeted to pay that off, and that, um, balance is 730,000, 736 dollars. There are a few key ratios that we report every year to you, um, one being the oper- operating margin. Ours is 0.25%. And the median of, of, uh, enterprise, or governments with enterprise funds, water and sewer funds exclusively, um, the median for the population of our size is 3.5. Our quick ratio is 8.3, which is well above the median of 4.8. The day sales unreceivable is 41, which is, well, better than, ahead of the median, which is 51. Days cash on hand is 673, the median is 358, and our cash flow from operations is 772, 697. And we do have a pension trust fund, it's law enforcement, it is mandated, um, that the town fund, um, this pension trust fund, which we currently have four eligible retirees drawing a retirement benefit from the fund. It had a small balance at June 30th, but it requires 72,297 during this year that we're in to fund the current retirees. And I think that's all we have. Are there any questions?
I have a question, and it's probably more information that you can provide when we get to this coming budget cycle, when we start preparing. Um, but noticing the last and, and the gap there with the retirement fund, the special retirement fund, um, how are we project, starting to do projections on estimated retirees and how that's going to need to grow over time?
Well, there is a report in the CAFR. Um, we do have an actuarial study done every year, and they let us know what is required. We're actually overfunded right now because we are paying it out, because we have current retirees. Uh, yes, they do an age, they do it based on, um, the number of active law enforcement officers and, um, various data that we, they, we provide them, and they tell us what our funding should be. So, we are actually technically overfunded, but we are paying it. It's a pay, we're doing it as pay-as-you-go. We don't have a separate account or anything set up for that, but we're doing it pay-as-you-go. And once those retirees drop off, then we will probably go through a period of no funding, or lesser amount of funding. Now, that balance that I gave you was at June 30th, we fund it for one year. We know who our retirees are, we know what their benefit will be, and that's what we ask you for in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
And I apologize for the eyesight, I just, it's, I'm usually almost asleep by now.
No worries.
My eyes just don't function this well at 8 o'clock.
Well, Beverly, thank you so much for your leadership in our finance department. Sharon, you're here, so thank you. I know Amy's not here, but thank Amy and the rest of your team, um, and certainly our, our department heads who are, you know, ever so conscious in managing, managing their accounts and their funds, but we really appreciate the work that you all do, and, and, once again, to have a great audit, as well as to receive the, um, achievement and excellence, it just is a testament to your leadership and what your team does. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll move on then to item number two under new business. Um, this is a presentation from NCDOT representatives from the transportation planning branch. This is an update on the Dare County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, including multimodal highway maps. So, thank you all. You probably are disappointed that you weren't at our last meeting, which was a record-breaking short meeting, and now we're probably going for our record-breaking, breaking longest meeting, but we welcome you all, you know, to be here, so thank you. If you'll please introduce yourself first.
Okay, my name is Carrie Morrow. Um, I've been the project engineer for the Dare County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, uh, been working on for a couple of years now. So, I'll just go over kind of an overview of what, what we've been doing. Um, the objective of tonight's presentation will just to give you a brief explanation. I think that Greg has probably given you some updates, um, periodically, um, of what we've been doing, um, and then the next steps, um, and hopefully adoption of the CTP. So, to talk about who was involved, basically, we had representatives from all of the towns, as well as the county. We had a few citizens, um, that were also involved in, in, uh, I think Outer Banks Chamber, a couple other agencies that were involved, um, in developing this plan, and we met regularly over the course of the development of the plan. Just to kind of remind you what is a comprehensive transportation plan. Um, it's a long-range, multimodal plan, um, that's done for, sometimes for a city or, or a town, um, but in this case, it was done for the entire county of Dare County. Um, it's a conceptual plan, so it's a very broad, high-level plan, um, to recommend improvements, um, over the span of 25 to 30 years. So, we're, we were really looking, um, at the horizon year 2040, um, for this plan, so this is not about immediate deficiencies, it was about long-range planning. Um, and it's not fiscally constrained. Um, so, we're really looking, again, broad, broad conceptual, um, improvements that won't necessarily be funded there at this point. Um, we're, you know, we're just gather, it's kind of a gathering of ideas to potentially address, um, long-range transportation problems. Um, it's a, a vision plan, and, um, we developed it, uh, NCDOT takes the lead, um, and we, we worked very closely with Albemarle Rural Planning Organization, um, and then the stakeholders that I've already listed. Gretchen Barum was, was, uh, worked with us from Division One, so we had a lot of local input as well. Um, and again, it's multimodal, so we didn't just look at highway, we also looked at transit, we looked at bicycle and pedestrian, and, and in the case of Dare County, we also looked at ferry. This slide just kind of shows, uh, again, a comparison of, of the CTP to, um, what's called the, the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, um, and, uh, those are fiscally constrained, um, projects, um, and the relationship is, you know, those would possibly be gathered out of a, a comprehensive transportation plan, um, which again, is more broad and not fiscally constrained. Um, this, the slide shows a typical CTP schedule, so, um, we look first at, at the current year data for, for this particular plan. We looked at 2012, um, data and analyzed that data, um, to project that forward to the year 2040. Um, and then, we, you know, kind of identified deficiencies in the transportation system, and looked at different, um, alternatives that could address those, those deficiencies. Um, and so, what we came up with was, was the recommended plan that you have. Um, we're, we're looking to get adoption first at the local level, um, and then it'll go to, um, regional level, and then eventually state level. Um, and technical report usually comes later, but in this case, um, it has been complete, at least a draft of it has been complete, um, and, uh, eventually corridor protection and programming. So, just, I'll just briefly kind of go over the, the facility types just for highway, um, just so you guys can, can get a sense of what those different, um, symbols on the maps mean. Um, so, the highest level is freeway, and those are represented by a blue line. There are none that are recommended in Dare County, but those are the really high mobility, um, higher-speed roads with full control of access. Next is the kind of green line, which you do have on your maps, um, and that's expressway. It's also high mobility with low to moderate access, um, 45 to 60 miles per hour speed limit, um, and then you'll have limited or partial control of access on those roads. Um, no, no traffic signals, and you're looking at a me, um, a minimum of four lanes with a median on those roads. The next, um, level with the red symbol is Boulevard, and that's mo- moderate mobility and low to moderate access, 30 to 55 miles per hour, and limited or some, or partial, um, control of access with signals allowed. Um, again, you're looking at a minimum, well, you're looking at a minimum of two lanes, but with a median, um, on a Boulevard, and connections would be, um, at grade intersections or, or for major and minor cross streets, um, and encouraged, uh, sha- sharing of driveways. Um, and then finally, major and minor thoroughfares, which are the lower mobility, um, high-access roadways, um, 25 to 55 miles per hour, no control of access, and signals are allowed there, and no medians. So, um, I'll- there, and no medians. So I'll move on to the maps, and I guess you have a set of maps. The first map is an adoption map, so this really doesn't give a lot of information. This is just where we're going to document the dates of adoption by all the different parties who are adopting. The next few, or next couple of maps are the highway maps. So this first one shows the entire county, and then as we move forward, the insights A, B, and C kind of show a little bit more detail. And I think that the major, major highway recommendation that we'll talk about is on US 158. Gosh, and I can't see very well either from here. Yeah, hold on, I'm going to try and, try and see if I can read the, what's on the screen. Okay, well, the identified problem, sorry, I can't really see it very well. Well, basically, there were over near capacity along 158, all the way from Currituck County to US 64. Without being able to see it, I'll just say that there's an identified safety issue. I think it's, is it eighteen, eighteen sections and forty-five intersections with a, with a safety issue identified along that roadway. So definitely a documented safety issue. It's the primary north-south connection, you know, along the beach area. So the proposed improvement that we've recommended in this plan is for it to be a four-lane boulevard, so that would include a median. We believe this would reduce congestion and improve safety. Oh, and furthermore, we, as a steering committee, we kind of documented in the report that we would like to see a corridor study done so that we can kind of figure out what would the design details be, what would, what kind of cross-sections would be appropriate in the different parts of the roadway. The next few maps are your transit maps, and this slide is just pointing out, so there are a few things that are recommended. There's, there's going to be a loop, a bus loop that, which is on the next map, or the next slide. So a bus loop, and then two connectors. So the northernmost connector is kind of a, what we call the Duck and Southern Shores connector, and all this is, is a bus route, a fixed route, bus, bus, bus line. Right now, you guys have on-demand services, but this would be intended for, to be a fixed, possibly daily route. And again, you know, you know, this, this is just a recommendation. This is not looking at the intricate design details of how that would work. Sorry. Okay. Actually, okay, here we go. And the slide shows you where the loop surface would be, so that would be along US 158 and NC-12, over here in the, in Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk and Nags Head. And then you can see on this slide, we also point out where the Roanoke Island Connector would be using US 64. On this slide, we see, and this is still the same maps, but on this slide, I pointed out that there's a little symbol with a P inside a box, so there are a few that we recommended. If you look at the top of the slide, those two that are, one's in Nags Head and one's in Manio, those, those two are actually intended for private transportation, to facilitate private transportation for passengers. So we recommended two park-and-rides in those locations. Then there's one just south of Wellbone Junction that's intended to facilitate passengers using the Roanoke Island Connector. And then finally, at the bottom of the slide, the Hatteras Ferry Park and Ride, which would be to facilitate the possibility of passenger ferry over to Ocracote in the future, which is currently being studied. This is the draft bicycle map. There are, there are a number of bicycle and pedestrian recommendations, and I'll show you the insights, but they're just, they're so numerous, it's hard to name all of them. I will point out that the yellow symbol that you see on these maps, they're, they represent multi-use paths, so those are intended for both bicycle and pedestrian transportation. So wherever you see those yellow symbols, that's what the intended use is, and so you'll see them on both maps. So to talk about what's next, this is actually the last presentation that I'm doing for, so I've been to all the towns at this point, and as well as the county. Duck has adopted it on November fifth. Southern Shores, we presented on November fifth, but they actually adopted it at a later meeting. I don't, I don't remember the date on that. Kitty Hawk, they, we presented, or I presented on December first, they accepted it, which is a little bit, possibly a little bit different from adoption, so we're, we're trying to kind of figure out what the difference there is legally. And Manio adopted it on, last week, on December third. Nags Head also adopted it that day, and we go back to Dare County on December fifteenth. And I had presented that to them, the plan to them in November. They wanted to see where the towns were deciding before they, they took a vote on it. If all these go well, then we will go to Albemarle RPO for endorsement in January, and then on to the DOT Board of Transportation in February. Just here's my contact information, as well as Gretchen and Angela's. And at this point, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you.
Were you talking about doing away with the turning lane and having a solid median?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
I have more of a person, yeah, no, go ahead. Mine's more of a procedural.
You made the statement that adding the median and turning that into, I guess, I don't remember the exact term, but that would reduce congestion?
Yeah, because of control of access. So on a boulevard, you're going to have control of access, and there are a lot of ways that, that controlling access can actually improve congestion, even, even though it may not seem like it because you're taking driving way, driving room away, but it's, it's proven to be safer in, in at capacity, yeah. Okay.
I'm Gretchen Barham, by the way. It's just to add on to that, Carrie mentioned earlier in the presentation that we would be doing, it was recommended to do a corridor study. So that corridor study would determine what the cross-section would be. So just that as a reminder to keep in mind. Does it designate what the median is going to be, whether concrete, landscape, earth, and that sort of thing? So the corridor study would determine that.
And that, that study would also determine, like, breaks within the median and that type of thing?
That's right.
Well, procedurally, my question, Debbie, this is probably more for you. Did you say that we have to hold a public, do we have to hold a public hearing on this?
Public comment period or a public hearing.
Okay, but it can't be tonight. It has to be posted, and so we, we can't really adopt it tonight. We need to schedule that.
Not if you can, because you didn't advertise it for a public hearing.
Okay, and, but the other boards have, I mean, are they aware? Are you aware of that? Okay, but I'm just wondering, because the earliest that we could technically adopt this is going to be, assuming that we stick to what's proposed with our schedule, which is January twelve. Are you aware of that with your timeline? Is that going to factor into your timeline?
It may, and if that's required locally, then that's fine. We'll, we'll follow whatever plan you guys follow. It's not required for us, but if you require it, then we'll, we'll wait. That's fine.
Right, okay. Yeah, we, we have to, but I just realized it might affect your timeline a little.
That's okay. That's right.
Okay, but we, it would really be up to us whether we schedule, whether we promote it as a public comment or a public hearing.
Right.
But either way, it needs to be promoted, and we can't officially adopt what's in here as the resolution until January twelfth.
How do we want to do that?
I think if we, if it's, I mean, such a high-level plan with a, with a future outlook, I mean, I think public comment would be fine as long as we're advertising that versus an official hearing.
I'm fine with that as well. Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with that as well.
And you can take public comment in January when, when you consider it at that point in time that you choose.
Okay. So we will
Let's schedule.
revisit this for January twelfth during public comment, or receive public comment that time?
And anything that we can save up to.
Sure, okay. And then would we have it then as an agenda item for the resolution? Okay.
Is that why the town, what, did you say Kitty Hawk? Is that why they did what they did?
No.
Okay. I just had to ask that question.
We don't want to have that discussion.
But from the board's perspective, is everyone comfortable with the plan?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay. Item number three under new business is scheduling a public hearing on requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning. This is Walter Eulichus, Section 153.100, Section E, Section 4, Ocean Impact Residential Zone and Lot Coverage to Allow Permeable Pavement with Lot Coverage Reduction. Greg, do you mind providing some input on this, of course, please?
Not at all. And you're back to me again. What we have here is a request, Mr. Saunders is here representing Mr. Eulichus tonight, to add to the Ocean Impact Zoning District what you already find in the commercial zone and the light industrial one zone, and that is to have permeable pavement allowed as a lot coverage reduction, for lot coverage reduction. So those other two zones already have that, and he's simply asking for that to be included in, in the, in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone, which we had quite a bit of discussion on earlier today. Well, through the discussion at the planning board, I understand that, that his request was for lots fifteen thousand square feet or larger, and the planning board wanted to include those lots less than fifteen thousand square feet. And they did that with a built-upon area maximum of sixty percent as opposed to the sixty-five percent, which is what Mr. Eulichus would like to have in the ocean front zone. So in other words, current zoning lot coverage is fifty-five percent in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone. But if you put down enough of this concrete to manage your stormwater, and there's a ratio for it, then you can build up to a maximum of sixty-five percent lot coverage in the Ocean Impact for those larger lots, and for the smaller lots, only sixty percent built-upon area. Your management of the stormwater has been proven to work. I mean, I think we've got a couple of examples in town already that show that this is a viable, viable way to manage stormwater, and also you have to follow the state best management practices when you put this in, which requires some maintenance. There's some vacuuming and some, some maintenance that you have to do to this, this type of application. And there, there are other types of applications that you could use too, force asphalt, air locking pavers, but what this one is asking for is the forced concrete. And on, let me see, the planning board reviewed this and recommended approval, and recommended we scheduled a public hearing for January twelfth, 2015, if that's the day you choose in your schedule for your next board meeting.
Do you envision that anything that, when we start revisiting discussions with this workshop, do you envisioning? Any of this overlapping at all? I guess, mainly, I don't know if it would or if it wouldn't, but the concern about scheduling this for January twelfth, if then we're also having a workshop, could this overlap some in?
I, I can, I can envision anything being brought into the mix as far as the discussion, and certainly when you, when you look at what, what year's development, your setbacks, your height, lot coverage being another. So it's all part of the public, and it gives more flexibility to manage stormwater, but it also, it will give the person trying to build something, be it a hotel or be it a single-family dwelling, large or small, some more flexibility in the way they can design their project. So I would say you could do more if you were very clever, but it also might make something possible in another state, another instance where you might not be able to do it. So I can see all kinds of discussions happening, but the staff's supportive of it, and it seems to have worked so far, and we'll have to see what the public would have to say about it, I guess, if you schedule a public hearing.
Now, absent any other factors, just for the sake of argument, would this allow larger structures?
Hard to say. It depends on the lot. I would say, under certain circumstances, yes. And under other circumstances, it wouldn't matter at all.
So you would either have what you have now, or if you pass this, you possibly could have larger?
That's right.
Okay.
But you've got to realize by the time you put your parking out there and put your wastewater or your dumpster, and you meet your setbacks, and you meet your setbacks from the ocean, this is a small, this is, this is very small compared to what you can do right now, let's put it that way.
We may, I don't understand.
It's not, it's not a huge change. I don't think you'll see a house that's, you won't look at and go, gosh, that one's got forced concrete. That's why it's so much bigger than the one next to it. Yeah, I don't think you'll see that.
So going from a possible, or from the current fifty-five percent to a possible sixty-five percent, wouldn't allow for a larger dwelling?
Like I said, it depends on the lot and the design and the other factors. Okay, you've got to have that area to put parking on, you've got to have the area to have a dumpster, have its service if it's a big house, or a septic tank. This is going to help with stormwater. So it will help some with that, so whether you can build a bigger house or not, again, I'd say in a certain scenario, certainly you could, but others probably wouldn't make that much difference if any.
Kind of a key point, since we spent an hour and a half on trying to reduce potential sizes of beach road structures. So.
That's why, you know, you've mentioned before, and that's why I asked the question, is if we don't do anything with this, then everything would stay the same as far as how much you could build. But if we approved this, then it possibly could be bigger, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't accomplish anything if we were looking to reduce or maintain the mass of structures on the beach.
And what?
And these currently, you know, we're looking at two different types of structures that are regulated. We were talking about floor area ratio. If you decide to bring the single families in, then what I'm talking about with the houses, we'll take a whole lot closer look at that, and we can show you some examples of what it might do on certain lots, if that's, if that's what you're choosing. And again, we're not asking for you to approve this tonight, but only schedule a public hearing, and when you decide to do that, might be a function on when you decide to have your workshop.
I guess, I guess what I'm not clear on, I can understand the permeable concrete for water runoff and being able to absorb, but why include a lot coverage increase if it's not going to potentially allow for a larger structure?
It's going to allow, it's going to allow for more coverage on that lot, whether that makes the house actually larger or not. It might, you know, say they parked underneath it and maximized everything, the guy might not want to park underneath it. Instead of that, he might want to have his parking on the outside, and
That's coverage.
It's a matter of design. And like I said, your puzzle is wastewater, dumpster, parking, building footprint, and decks.
And the deck is also considered coverage.
And outdoor kitchen and all the other stuff that people build in these houses nowadays. Maybe you have that on yours. I don't mind. But all those different things add up to be lot coverage, and it might not be a bigger house, it might be a bigger pool, you know, who knows?
There'd be more stuff on the lot.
Possibly.
But it might not, well, it might not be what we just talked about. We talked about being able to see the ocean and being this way. It might actually be, if you're, if you have a walkway going to the ocean, that's lot coverage. So it might actually be that, and then the gazebo to be able to, to sit there and look at the ocean. That's, again, all lot coverage. So it would allow for a little bit more, that you could build a little bit bigger gazebo, and again, if that's, if that's in the face of the house, you're not seeing that from the, you're not seeing that from the, I'm advocating one way or the other for that, but I'm just trying to envision what we're talking about here. I'm advocating one way or the other for that, but I'm just trying to envision what we're talking about here. But there's a lot, but it could, if you chose not to build that, then you might could build this much more on either side of the house.
I'm not going to put a pool there, I'm not going to do anything else, you know, which can't have, doesn't work that way really, in the real world, but you know, you could.
But there is an advantage to this for stormwater management.
Absolutely.
I think that, I think that's an important factor here with issues that we have on the beach road.
But our current, the current solutions are like the 50% pavers and that type of thing. I mean, and that does allow for some drainage. I mean, given the fact that we spent so much of the meeting on size of structures and things like that, I would feel a lot more comfortable with this if it was just to allow permeable pavement to be used.
You could already do that.
Okay, so this is specifically to get additional lot coverage?
Right, and our town engineer was just saying it might be noteworthy to mention the fact that there's no stormwater management on NC 12, that this could help. And I guess you're kind of compromising, there's a trade off here. You might get a little something extra, but hopefully the town will get a better situation with the stormwater, so. Yeah, and most, we don't have anything in our ordinance that requires stormwater for a single family dwelling. It was one caveat that the Public Services Department can require if it's over 3,200 square feet or something. But it's just, it's not really used that much, it doesn't really have any teeth in it. But this is one, kind of let's involuntarily manage their stormwater. So the town will get something back from that.
Well, there's, you know, there's a lot of different things that happen. Like you said, it could make, they could have a bigger building, they could have a bigger pool, they could have a tiki bar. It could increase from 55 to 65. Am I correct? I mean, yeah. Are we going in opposite directions on those two issues?
Well, in the 55 to 65, it's not necessarily the house. It could also be the deck, it could be the pool, it could be the...
It's the built upon area, massive.
Absolutely.
And there's other things as we move forward with this workshop, that we can look at. You know, what a structure looked like isn't just predicated by what this is. I mean, you look at far, you look at setbacks, you know, there's multiple variables that we're going to need to engage in looking at all of those, because all of those have an implication. This does have a direct benefit, so yes, it may be a trade off, but but there's an advantage to the town because of the potential improvement in
Stormwater. Stormwater management's huge, and especially that close to the ocean. There's just so much, and when you're right there at the road, that's just, that's a lot.
I don't see how increasing allowable lot coverage is going to help with our stormwater. I don't know if Pete could help us with that at all, but I'm lost there. I mean, if we already allow the permeable concrete, then that isn't allowed use already. So how would increasing the lot coverage percentage help with stormwater runoff?
Mayor, let me step in for just a minute. We're getting into facts and decision making, and all we're really talking about tonight is setting a public hearing. So I think we need to be careful about that.
But the potential is at the end of the public hearing for us to make a decision.
That's, that's correct.
So, I mean...
But you're not hearing from the applicant, you're not hearing from other folks tonight, so.
I understand that.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Eulichus has paid his money. He's applied for it, he's been heard by the planning board, and he has a, I think he has a right to go to public hearing.
Sure.
If I wasn't advocating that he couldn't, I was just, this will give us something to be talking about between now and then.
Well, and for the conversation, the other thing, you know, sometimes it's a bit frustrating if you don't have a certain level of discussion before you send something to public hearing. What you're sending to public hearing, you're discussing just that, and then if we change it, so. But being mindful of legislative process.
If you look, I saw on the back of my memo, it basically tells you about what you get for that forest concrete with a washstone base, and if you take a thousand square feet and you don't have a washstone base, you only get 40% of that has a reduction on that, a thousand square feet. If you add six inches of washstone, you get a 60% reduction on that area. So we're talking about a lot of concrete, it's got to be porous concrete before you get up to that 65% built upon area. And I personally haven't taken a number of houses and tried to figure out what could be done with it. Really hadn't taken the time to say, take this, give them this pool, and this parking area, and this dumpster pad, and this footprint of a building. We can do that if that's, if that's important.
So where we are is to determine whether we want to schedule this hearing for January 12th, which is our, likely to be our next meeting, or for a different time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion or comments?
I'm still confused. The justification for the amendment says that the beach road floods hard. During hard and long extended periods of rain, this amendment would give incentive to the homeowners to use porous concrete, eliminating runoff, keeping our beach road from being flooded and safer to drive on. But porous concrete, you're saying, is already allowed?
Right, it costs more, and there's no incentive to do it, exactly.
There's also maintenance involved.
This allows
Then...
not being used.
Right.
Have to incentivize if we want to see it, or somehow, that's kind of the thought process.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item is item 4A, it's probably A and B, capital improvement projects. And Pete is with us this evening to go over. The first is the street improvement recommendation for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I'm so conflicted. I'm Pete Burghammer of American Engineering Associates, by the way. But I'm not going to go into any detail about that unless you want to hear it, and the hour, I don't think you do. I also would love to talk to you for half an hour about the good work that we're up to, past projects, the ongoing projects, and future projects. But again, respecting the hour, I'll be brief. The Street Improvement Committee did meet last month and is recommending to you what you've seen in your packets. As you'll recall, it's a, we do a three-phase look, a definite look at what we suggest you do for the upcoming fiscal year 15, 16. Sort of a strong suggestion for 16, 17, and a fuzzy look at what the next year might be. The recommendation for 15, 16 is that we pick up what we called Alternates X and Y from the last bid, for which there wasn't enough funding to do, the pricing was good, a lot of interest in those projects, just not enough money to do it. If we hurry up and do that very next cycle, the design will still be valid, and it just costs almost nothing to freshen that up and get it out to bid again. But to round that up to a decent package, we propose to add in Susan and Cameron, again, up in the northwest area, two more of our poor streets that won't need much more than a glorified overlay. And then rounding out the project, there's a little cross-country drainage project that would bring drainage from Creek over to Sioux in that troublesome area there where there's backyard flooding and flooding on Sioux Street, and there's a little $50,000 project to pick that up. And all that would be lumped into a project that we would design over the coming months and be ready to go out to bids shortly into the new fiscal year. Then the following fiscal year, 16, 17, it's the recommendation of the committee that we do what we'll call Phase Four. It's sort of an enhanced Phase Four of the multi-use path, which would pick up, if we work from south to north, where we left off with Phase Five at the intersection of Canal and First, and work our way around Canal all the way to Bay, and then Bay up to about Fifth Street, depending on how the funding and the cost ran. We might bid an alternative that would let it stop Fourth or thereabouts if we didn't have quite enough money to go to Fifth. And that would be in conjunction with a two-pronged grant application approach that Meredith would be working on. One of those tourism board grant, and the other one, what is that, Greg?
Auction Recreation Trust Fund.
PRTF fund, with a goal of hitting about $400,000, or perhaps in the neighborhood of a third the cost of the project. So there's no design requested on that, except there'll be a very small amount of expenditure out of my general services funds to help prepare exhibits for Meredith's grant application process. So there's nothing before you tonight, other than just keeping you informed on what the thinking is for 16, 17. When we get to 17, 18, there's a menu of about three different poor streets, sets of projects that we can look to, and the committee, and we, and the staff will look at that as that draws closer. So in support of those recommendations, we have a couple of engineering proposals for you. Oh, and by the way, doubling back to 15, 16, it was the consensus of the committee that we coordinate with the town of Nag's Head on two different projects on Eighth Street, which is the center line of which is the town line between the two towns. The suggestion is that on West Eighth Street, since Nag's Head has the greater interest, that they take lead there, and we just chip in some money to support basically the cost of an overlay of our half of the road. We're okay with the drainage on our side. If they want to do any widening for their convenience on our side, fine, but that would be at their expense. We would flip that on East Eighth Street, where we're proposing to take the drainage backbone that we would have run up with the alternate Y project, which is Wrightsville, where we bring that up to the Wrightsville Eighth intersection. We would poke that on up the north side of Eighth, East Eighth, I'm, yeah, East Eighth, up to, but not across Virginia Dare Trail, to give us a little bit of our classical sock drainage approach that's working so well in that area. So we would be bearing that drainage cost and the cost of our side paving, and any curb returns we might decide to do, and then Nag's Head would chip in just money. We do the design, the oversight, and our part, our costs north of the center line, they would do the cost south of the center line, or some similar formula. And I understand that there's been an expression of concurrence from Nag's Head, but I don't know whether the board is ready to consider that tonight, and the town manager, I'm sure, will speak to that. But I've offered three proposals. One is for the design of the Wrightsville Memorial Cameron Susan Sioux package, which would be the 15, 16 package of projects. I have also offered a proposal on Eighth Street, which you may or may not be ready to consider. And then separately, under the water funding, we've got a proposal to take another whack at the asbestos cement pipelines in town, this time going back to Virginia Dare Trail, and doing those very northern and very southern extreme parts. We ran a big line, a gigantic 16-inch line, pretty much the whole length of the town, except for those very ends. We didn't need them hydraulically, but they're still the old asbestos lines that are softening up and we want to get rid of. So now we would go back there, at the south end of the town, from Fresh Pond down to the town line, with a little bit of related work on Eighth. And then up at the north end, everything from Palmetto northward to the Kitty Hawk Town Line, together with several east-west streets, so that there wouldn't be any more asbestos cement lines in that little northeastern area. And again, the rest of it speaks for itself, and if I'm going to stay true to my promise to be brief, I'd better shut up.
All right, thank you, Pete. Stand by for questions.
Will do.
So Pete actually went ahead and explained both A and B for us with his explanation. So we touched, we touched certainly on the street improvement recommendations, but also the water main improvement. We should look at these as two separate motions with our actions, though. Questions for Pete or for Debbie?
Question on, and I'm kicking myself now for taking my notes from the last meeting out, but we had a public comment on, and I don't remember now if it was Wrightsville or
It was that XY.
Is that, his concerns would be addressed by one of them?
Absolutely, that was Mr. Arnt on Wrightsville. And this does for him, in fact, I'm anxiously awaiting your positive action so that I can race Steve to an email device to let Mr. Arnt know that it is actually officially the town's position, this will be done.
Yeah, I would like to see that taken care of.
That's what specifically is included, and in the packet, Mary even made sure that everyone looked at that. But that's included in the alternates X and Y that would be funded with this.
We won't call them that anymore, they'll be in the base bid this time. But calling them alternates X and Y might suggest that they may go over to the cutting room floor again, and that isn't your intent, I don't think.
Yeah, the base bid. And then as far as the east and west Eighth Street, what's being recommended right now is for us to authorize the town manager and town attorney to work with Nag's Head to come up with an agreement that then would come back to us. But at least, I know at Nag's Head's last meeting, they did, their board approved to work with us. So I think that the climate's right, I know this has been attempted for years. Hopefully, we can actually come to an agreement this time and get this done, because I think everyone's acknowledging that it needs to happen. So we would just be authorizing for them to try to come to an agreement and bring it back. Right. Any other questions or comments? Well, a motion would be in order to include the three components.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that, under new business, item 4A, 1, 2, and 3, make a motion in favor of that.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then a separate motion would be in order to approve the engineering agreement for the water main improvements.
Sir, what, sir, what did you say?
So we need, we need a separate motion, and that motion would be specifically to enter into an engineering agreement and for the town manager to be able to execute that agreement for specifically the water main improvements that Pete described with removing the asbestos cement water main lines, the north and south ends of NC 12.
I'll make that motion that we accept B as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great holiday. There will be some meeting soon where I bring my new boss down to get him introduced to you.
Thank you, Pete, for all your good work.
Thank you. Okay, lastly, under new business, we have an appointment to the Community Apairance Commission. Ms. Sandy Markland is interested in filling the vacancy on the CAE, CAC. She currently sits on the landmark, the Historic Landmarks Commission. If there's an agreement, a motion would be in order to make that appointment.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sandy Markland to fill the vacancy on the CAC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Sandy was active in Avalon Association for a good, she may still be, but she was for a good while. I've met her a few times, and she's, she's the type of person that likes to get involved, which is what we're looking at.
Be a good addition to that group, because it's a very involved group, so, that's great. Okay, moving on to Commissioner's agenda, Commissioner Midget?
Yeah, so a few weeks back, I was arranged with Assistant Chief Harris to go on a ride along. It was very informative and very interesting. I went along with Officer Pierce. And I'd say that the most impressive piece of equipment we have is the ticket printer. It's a thermal printer, and it doesn't require any ink or toner, just thermal It's a thermal printer, and it doesn't require any ink or toner, just thermal paper, so the longevity of this piece of equipment, I think, is, you know, money well spent. And I really appreciate the ride-alongs, really interesting.
Yeah, between that and the fancy radar, yeah, that's pretty good. I like that.
That's great.
To use that radar to print that, and then print a ticket out for you.
You don't have to write or anything, it's just you put the paper in, it's clear, you can read it, you can understand it, and there's no question about what you have in front of you.
That's great. Anything else this evening?
I don't remember if there was.
It's getting kind of late now, isn't it?
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Appelen?
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Reban?
I was going to talk a lot more about this, but I will give a brief summary, because I promised Gwen White this, and I'll have to answer her tomorrow morning if I don't. We currently have Angel Gift, formerly known as Angel Tree, going on at the Bomb Center right now, and I was hoping that everybody in the room would stay so I could talk about this, but they didn't. So, they worked with the bike shops and the bike clubs to get about ten thousand dollars in bikes for the three hundred and thirty-six kids and the hundred and forty-five families, the underprivileged families in the county. So, those are the kids that are being served this year. There's about a hundred thousand dollars overall that will be spent for these kids. There were sixty-six angels that were not taken, so that's the number of kids that the Women's Club will be shopping for, probably yesterday and tonight. They will be, the families will be receiving their goods on Wednesday. They are still short, for those of you that don't know that, so they will, they will still be receiving money to, taking money, anybody who wants to donate tomorrow, it is a tax write-off. The Outer Banks Women's Club is a nonprofit, five oh one C three, they will send you a letter, I will tell you, I myself have made a donation and write that off every year, so I challenge anyone in this room to do that. But they are still in need, and you will probably hear that on the, on the radio, and we'll see that on Facebook. So, I know, I want to thank the police department, I know they make frequent ride-throughs, and because there's a lot, thankfully this will not, by the time this airs, it'll be gone. But there's a lot there, and the police department's very proactive in making sure that they do extra patrols in the area while there are a lot of women in the building helping with that. But they spend a lot of time, Outer Banks Women's Club spends a lot of time doing that, and it's a great program for the underprivileged kids. But again, they're a little short this year, so if anybody wants to write me a check or give me some money, I'll be glad to take it back to Gwen tomorrow morning. And for those of you that don't know, Gwen White has done this for the last twenty-eight years with Julia Haywood, who passed away in the last few weeks. So, it's a sad year for us. And I'm done.
Isn't there an online opportunity to donate as well? Or is that, maybe not through the Women's Club, but there is the...
With the bikes.
The Bike Initiative.
They're, they do not need any more bikes, I can tell you that. This year is the first year they've actually, they're good with bikes, but they're short on everything, they're actually short on clothing. They actually need the basic essentials for kids, they need clothes, they need shoes, they need socks, that kind of stuff. So this year, the bike shops and the bike clubs actually really, really stepped up, and again, over ten thousand dollars worth of bikes were actually gotten. So, if you walk into, the Bomb Center's closed Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so if you actually walk in that building, it's not closed, closed, but if you walk in, you can actually, the first thing you hit, hits you is the smell of rubber, so you can smell the bicycles, so that's the main reason we're closed.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Perchin?
No, I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to Mayor's agenda, just two items this evening. One is actually in your packet, it's the proposed late two thousand and fifteen schedule, the meeting calendar, and if you all had the chance to review these dates.
I have a little problem.
Okay.
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
I have a wedding to go to in Pennsylvania, same time.
Are there gun range there?
Possibly. I mean, we, the next, the next day would be fine, the, I guess it would be the thirteenth.
Or even maybe that Wednesday instead.
Wednesday.
Which, maybe, the thirteenth?
Is that okay?
It's okay with me, okay with you guys, okay. May thirteenth, okay.
Wednesday, May thirteenth.
Instead of the eleventh, okay. And then, I'm not, as far as the adding the workshop, I unfortunately don't have my calendar here tonight, can we work through, just coordinating with Mary and Debbie to get a date for that later? Debbie, or how do we?
Absolutely. One of the thoughts that I was having was, since there's not a second meeting scheduled in January, if you wanted to consider the twenty-eighth, which, which would be the fourth Wednesday.
I would be open to considering it, I just don't...
No, I mean, I'm just throwing that out as a possibility, that if you wanted to check your calendars and then get back with us, and if that doesn't work, then we'll look at something else.
That one's not good for me.
Okay, then that, okay.
I'm sorry?
Oh, that's a good idea. If we, if you wanted the planning, Greg, what is your, what are the second meetings typically?
It could be a site plan meeting, but we wouldn't know that until, I guess, tomorrow.
Or you meet on the, is it the first and third?
Right.
First and third Tuesday?
We can meet at the pleasure of the board, too, for sure. Cut-off date, site plans is tomorrow. You don't think there's anything, that meeting should be open.
This is January twentieth? Is that what we're talking about? And that's a Tuesday?
Right, and that would be if you wanted to do it in the same meeting with the planning board, just an idea.
I would hate, yeah, I'm all for consolidating meetings, I feel for people who have, yeah, I know, for those of you that have, well, those of us that have lots of meetings.
I won't be here yet. I'm leaving the afternoon of the twentieth.
Okay.
Coming back on the twenty-sixth.
What about the next planning board meeting, which would be, what, the first Tuesday in February?
That would be the third.
I think that works for me.
That works for me.
That meeting will be open for sure? Well, let's look at that.
If you want to check your calendars and then get back with us?
I wrote it down, I'll check it.
And then if that's the case, then we can put it on the January meeting under the consent agenda that you set for workshop.
So, for the purpose of tonight and approving our schedule, a motion would be in order, then, to approve the schedule with the change to Wednesday, May thirteenth, but we won't actually include the workshop date.
I wouldn't at this point, ma'am.
And what time is that meeting, seven?
No, it's five thirty.
Oh, it's a five thirty, awesome.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion about the schedule?
I'll make a motion that we approve the calendar with the change for the May meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The other thing I had was, last year, if you recall, we authorized hosting a committee reception for all of the volunteers that serve on the various committees in the town. I think it was very well received. Getting some thumbs up in the audience for the few that are still here. I would like to propose that we do that again, if you all are in agreement, and also do it like we did last year, I think it was the great location and very well attended.
Yep, I think so, as well.
Probably do it, you know, sometime beginning of the new year. While we're here, there were dates, because you were out of town some, you were out of town some, you know, we were looking into January or February, but...
Well, last time it snowed, right?
It did snow, hopefully that won't happen again, we did have to reschedule. We originally had a date in January, and then, right, with the snow, it was pushed back several weeks.
I'm going to be out of town twice in January.
Was February a better date to consider?
I'll be out of town from fifteenth to the twentieth of January, then again, the following week from the twenty-seventh till the thirtieth.
And you're gone, so I think, I think we need to look into February, because then you're gone, the week after you're gone, okay.
February.
All right, so, stay away from now, the first week of February, and then Monday and the second week, but the calendar.
The week of the ninth.
What about Thursday, the twelfth? Abraham Lincoln's birthday, what a great way to celebrate. What do you guys think?
February twelfth.
February twelfth?
Sounds good.
Okay, sound okay? All right, let's, I can't remember what we did last year, did we do four to six or five to seven?
I think it was four to six.
Four to six, did you guys like that time?
Yes.
Okay, let's go with four to six.
Sounds good.
All right, great, that was it, under my agenda. Town manager's agenda?
Ma'am, nothing this evening.
Town attorney?
Nothing.
Okay, consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Three items on the consent agenda, minutes from the November tenth, twenty fourteen, a memorandum of understanding reciprocal use of building inspection services and building officials' personnel. This is between the town of Kildalver Hills and the town of Duck. This does not include any office hours, this is just in-the-field building inspection services. The second is a resolution authorizing sale of found and unfound properties. You have the attachment attached to the end of this memo. An approval of the consent agenda will record the board's authorization for the sale of unclaimed property, either separately or as a group, in accordance with the requirement of the general statute through the GOV deal program that we utilize. The sale will be scheduled for at least thirty days from the date of advertisement, and staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any ever gone to that site, GOV deals? I went there and there was different, like, lots of knives and leather men and stuff like that, they confiscate TSA. I think I saw my leather man in there. They took away from me, on the way to Chicago. I forgot it was in my camera bag, so, I'm going to buy it back.
Yeah, I actually went out, I was actually looking for a fire truck the other day, so I don't know if it's actually been published up there or not, but I was looking for, see if there were any bids on it, so...
Are you interested?
No. I might have a little parking problem with that.
This is now on the agenda the second time that's set aside, sorry, cut off the chatter, but, you know, we are giving Nag's Head a run for their money. It is the second time set aside for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this public comment time? We need the last few people hanging on with us, we appreciate you, going to the very end. No one wants to say anything? Okay, so there's no response, so, anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Anything else? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.